I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Ross, will you please call the roll?
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Uh, Dr. Randles.
President.
Mr. Ross, yes. Ms. Slade.
Here.
Uh, Dr. Baker.
Here.
Uh, Mrs. Brand.
Yes.
Uh, Pastor Moody.
Here.
President Faul.
President, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Support?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, same sign? Thank you. We have no celebrations today and no student representatives. Uh, do we have public comment on board agenda items?
We do. We have, uh, two. Uh, Mr. Paul Helder and Ms. Mary Bowens.
Would you please come on down?
I have brand-new egg time.
Oh.
Two of them.
Oh.
Pretty impressive.
Yeah. Thank you. Maybe we should put one on that table.
So Ms. Bowens, would you like a one-minute warning or you could?
I don't think I'll take that one, but thank you.
Okay, great, thank you.
Um, Madam President, Board Members, and Superintendent Neal, I'm Mary Bowens, Vice President of GREA, speaking on behalf of our members. I would like to speak to the effects and possible unintended consequences of the vacancy and transfer and layoff procedures that were used by the district this year. Many professional staff have spent the last six weeks wondering if they're going to be employed by Grand Rapids Public Schools, or should they be looking for employment elsewhere? Their professional futures still unknown. Communication from HR has not been sufficient enough to give employees information to make career choices or to be able to make life-changing decisions for their family and future. Questions have not been answered and the answers are incomplete. Timelines have not been honored. These people have been put in a tremendous amount of stress mostly because of the buildings they chose to work in. Teachers by nature are collaborative creatures, uh, working together for the advancement of their students. I, I see the system that was used for vacancy, transfer, and layoff uh, creating an atmosphere of competition for, uh, the people that work here. The, um, decisions that were made were, seemed inconsistent, so I'm afraid that the, the message has been very confused. Nobody, no two people have had the same story or the same timeline. But as teachers, we do continue to, uh, teach our students fairness and justice for all of our students. And I don't see that the system that was used this year, um, does either of those things. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like here, one minute?
Nope. That would be great.
Okay.
Um, I'm, I'm really trying to hold it together right now. I just found out 20 minutes ago that the number of individuals up for layoff today is significantly higher than what we've been told throughout this entire process. Enough so that I, I have to ask, how, how did that number become so inflated at the end here? And was that always the number and we just weren't told, or what? And I don't know because we've been kept pretty much in the dark about the design of most of this stuff uh, throughout this whole year. The Superintendent and I have not been meeting, uh, for a variety of reasons. I expect it started in negotiations, uh, where perhaps it would not have been as appropriate for us to meet, but it has continued. I know that we've been deliberately kept in the dark about the design process for transfer and vacancy, design process for layoff. Uh, I find out the same time that my members do, in fact, sometimes later because sometimes they email me the emails they get. And 15 minutes, actually, to be accurate, 22 minutes, 23 minutes before this meeting, so I really haven't had time to, to fully deal with it. I find out that in spite of the fact that we've had 50 whatever people who have retired, we're still looking at 106 GREA layoffs. When I asked about layoffs, uh, what, a couple of months ago, I had some TV folks who came by and wanted to know what our reaction was. Uh, I called the district and I asked what the number was. And I was told it was 29. And I asked the question, okay, well, we've got about 40 people who have announced so far. So, understanding that certification is what it is and that you're gonna have a little bit of wiggle there, aren't we looking at really about a wash? Yeah, probably. Well, now we've got 50 some odd people retiring and 106 still to be laid off? I don't understand this. I don't understand the process that was used. This whole thing stinks. It's, it's very arbitrary in the way that it's done. We've got some people, it's a point system, but we've got some people who, if they couldn't be reached during a week-long period of their vacation time here, and yes, we do get some vacation time. Okay, if they couldn't be reached in that week-long period, they receive zero points, so they're first on the block. We've got some people who were told they're not allowed to submit their documents because we're gonna use a different, we're gonna use a document that we use for a different process when it didn't really count for a whole lot. All right? Let me explain that. We had, uh, positions eliminated a few months back in May. And people were able, if they wished, to go ahead and try to get into a particular position. Some people are happy to work any building, doesn't matter who the kids are. Some people think that they're a better fit in a particular place, they choose to apply for a position. That particular document then, which was only a few points, or at least certainly not the majority of the points, in that process, is now being used to determine whether or not you stay on or don't for the layoff process. So I got some people who are being assigned a score of zero, some people who are being assigned a score from a different process, and other people who have been given multiple attempts at this process and told they can keep the high score. How is that fair? How does any of this move us toward transparency? How does any of this move us toward working together? If, if I can't know what's going on and I can't trust the numbers and things that I'm given, and by the way, you may notice in your general fund, you've got a situation where you're looking at, what, a surplus of 6.7 mil?
Can you make some concluding remarks? Your time is done.
Yes, I'm very unhappy. Please vote no on this whole thing. We got a lot of work to do and, uh, I, I feel completely betrayed at this point. And, you know, I realize that's an emotional response and I apologize in advance for that. But, you know, we were supposed to get this information a lot earlier. And like I said, it's been 20 minutes, so, thanks.
Thank you. Reports. Secretary's report. Mr. Ross.
I guess, uh, we do have a bit of, uh, interesting news. Uh, we have a success fest coming up. This is the first annual. Uh, this will take place at the new Jared R. Ford Academic Center on Madison on, uh, next Tuesday, the 23rd, from 3:00 to 7:00. The event is, is definitely free. Uh, but just a brief description. It's a celebration of, uh, GRPS, the schools, the special programs, and of course, our students. Uh, there will be a highlight of some of the I Believe to Become, I Believe I Become, Learning Academy Program participants and Baby Scholar participants. Uh, the Baby Scholar program is an educational program designed to help parents of infants and toddlers. And parents will also be able to find out more about the Baby Scholar program at the event, as well as the Summer Learning Academy and plenty of other services and school information to help, uh, students be successful academically um, at a variety of success fest booths, um, again, at Jared R. Ford Academic Center next Tuesday, 3:00 to 7:00 PM. There will be, uh, food, prizes, raffle, and, um, you know, come on, come off, basically. That's it. Last comment was mine.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Superintendent's report. Ms. Weatherall Neal.
Um, Mickey will come and share, uh, on the whole layoff process to provide some clarification on the layoff process.
Good afternoon.
Thank you.
Um, just to clarify if I could, uh, the interview questions or the additional information that, uh, Mr. Helder referenced, those teachers that did choose to interview did bring that information with them to the interviews. The only way they get to submit more than once, where we would use a higher score is if they had more than one interview and it was scored by a different principal. We gave them the benefit of the doubt and used the higher score. That was where that information came from. We also did send out emails, um, asking, requesting some additional information. Um, and this is based on our layoff and recall policy where we, um, when someone is, has the same effectiveness rating for their evaluation, the next thing we look at is significant relevant accomplishments and extra trainings. That's what was asked on those additional questions. Um, so what we did is requested from those teachers that were on that list, if they were tenured effective, probationary effective, to turn that in if they hadn't already done so. We did go through the email list and any teacher that had not read the email, we personally called all of them and every one of them did turn that information in dust. So they did not receive a zero if they, if they chose to turn it in. But we did speak to them. Um, we had principals calling. It was a joint effort. But we, we got ahold of everybody that had not read that email. Once that process, we had all of that information together, then we looked at everybody's, um, effectiveness rating, the scores they got on those additional informa, uh, additional questions. And then if everything was equal, say everybody got a 10, they're all effective, then we looked at seniority. So we followed the policy that, that was adopted, uh, for layoff and recall. Um, it was a very tedious process, a lot of using the whiteboard and moving things around, but we did follow our policy. Um, we did not maintain any ineffective or minimally effective teachers over anyone that was tenured effective or probationary effective as per our policy and the new law. Um, and certainly, this is a preliminary number. Yes, it did take a long time for us to get there and, and Mr. Helder is correct. He just got the information. It was just delivered to your desks a little bit ago. But it has been, um, we wanted to make sure we did our due diligence to make sure that we had people placed accurately. We went through them again this morning to make sure we had numbers right according to what the budget had projected. Um, and again, this is preliminary. I know that we are, um, working, uh, through projections. Things could still change. You know, we could still be recalling as quickly as we lay people off. And, and certainly will, you know, continue and recall as quickly as we can so that people know if they have a position for next year.
Just add, you know, we talked about the importance of, uh, giving assignments as quickly as possible. And this is much earlier than we've done it in the past. However, we can't just call people, recall people, or leave people in positions until we actually go through projections to see where we are. We're doing that. We spent time last week, Thursday, a cabinet, working on that. It's on the agenda again this week. We will continue to go through. And I do suspect at the end of the day, probably another 50 people will be, um, back in the district as quickly as possible. Uh, we did want to try to get this information today, to have it today. That was our goal, so that the names would not even come to the board. Um, but we just have not been able to work through that, um, through everything. But that's, that's a goal. The other piece, so we're working through projections to get people placed as quickly as possible, highly effective teachers, um, placed as quickly as possible, I want to be fair. Um, the other piece is, um, we talked about creating a sub pool for the Grand Rapids Public Schools. We spend about $2.5 million on subs a year. And it is our, and, uh, our goal to create this pool of teachers that will be trained in, um, the Grand Rapids Public Schools way, that they can then become subs. And that will take about $1.2 million of the sub pool. Um, and again, we want to make sure that we have the right people in place to make that happen. And as far as, um, meeting with, uh, the President of GREA, Faul is absolutely correct. We did have one meeting since negotiations. But I do meet with both Renee and Joe at their request, um, to discuss, uh, ways that we can continue to work together. It is our intent to be totally transparent, but to be fair to everyone and to be fair to the district. And so we have to be careful when we bring people back based on those projections. I do believe that we will, we may have more people called back than we need in the fall, but our intent is not to open our classrooms with substitute teachers and so we will have more than enough people. And then we need to decide, you need to decide as a board, do we do a mid-year layoff if in fact the numbers don't come in? That's the only way to avoid the subs. But it is a messy process and I, um, we just continue to work to be very, uh, considerate of employees. We appreciate it, but we just can't have an extra 50 people on staff and not know where to send them. Certifications are based on what the needs are, so. Slow process.
Questions for?
Are you, yeah, Superintendent Neal, are you saying, uh, the projections you're talking about, these are student enrollment primarily?
Yes, yes.
Uh, and when do you expect to have that information finally, would you guess?
A couple of things. We will, we're, my hope is that we have the projections, um, finished next week. We have projections, but there's a human element to it. And an example of that is, we take 700 students, we're projecting to be down 700 students. We take that across the district and everyone shares in that loss of 700 students. There is a reality here. When you look at Buchanan, Cesar Chavez, those students tend to show up. And so even though we may have reduced four or five teachers at a particular school, just knowing what we do, those children will show up on the first day of school. You take some other schools, the students may not show up. History tells us that we have a number in, um, we do a projection in March. We look at the enrollment in July, and who shows up on September 1st? Three different numbers, right? And so that's what we're walking through.
Well, the, the 700 number has been, you, that, that number start, first appeared, what, six months ago? I mean, that, that's the number I've seen as long as I've been on the board. So, has there been any updated analysis on that? And is it track, is that 700 number tracking? Or are you saying we're still using that old number because we haven't done the new analysis?
No, it is, that is our projection based on just trends, enrollment trends in the district. So that is true. We do track it. We track that number very closely. It's scary to say that our numbers maybe, um, look much better, but it's really early in the game. You know, numbers fluctuate. And, um, so, but at first glance, we have looked at every single school in the entire district with three different count days. And, um, some of the schools that are high, I believe, will hold. So we are watching that very closely. Um, and, and within the next couple of weeks, we will start meeting, um, once a week, looking at projections. We're doing the, um, enrollment. We sent something out in May to people in this community to say, tell us where you're gonna land. Are you coming to Grand Rapids Public Schools? But we will continue throughout the summer to try to enroll as many students as possible.
Dr. Baker?
Uh, yeah, I'm trying to get a sense from, of each of these different groups. So the GREA, the GRESPA, GREAP, and then also the youth advocates. How much, um, I know this would be tough for you to say as a promise, as a guarantee, but, um, a, a range of persons that might be called back from each of these units. So starting with the GREA. Is there a range of, of personnel that you would expect to, to come? Because this is, this is a lot higher than we were expecting.
It is. Um, you know, just based on what I know and the numbers, I'm scared to say this out loud, so don't hold me to it. But I bet you, uh, another 50% of those teachers will be called back.
Okay, which gets us closer to what we were expecting, okay? Um, what about the other, GRESPA, are those?
I don't know. I don't know those numbers yet. Because for GRESPA, it will depend on student need, right? And, um, so forth, so I don't know that. I will say for the youth advocates, um, the majority of them will not be called back in, in that capacity. But I don't know the number. But those were, many of them, those positions were funded through SIG and the grant.
Okay, so this is, okay.
Right, and so you have some of that. You also have SIG positions, like teachers and things like that. So you also have some SIG positions on here. So it's not just a, I mean, just an easy number to say. But in looking at, the reason I say for, for teachers is because just going through like a Buchanan, if we removed five teachers because of enrollment, those children will show up. There is a human element to this, right? It's not just 700 students. You do it across the district. We know those children will show up. They typically show up. So. That makes sense. And we can continue to bring updates, I mean, because we'll continue to look at it. We can continue to bring updates, but I will, uh, uh, commit to you and to everyone else. It is truly, Michael, as it was in the beginning, to get as many teachers in place as early as possible because people need to have the right to prepare for next year, so.
So is that the rationale, the time constraint of announcing these layoffs at this time? So persons can make plans that they may not be in a position in the fall and so persons could plan to be elsewhere if they want to? Or is there a, a legal commitment that we need to make layoff at a certain time?
We need to make layoff at a certain time, um, because of the contract.
Okay.
And if that, if we had more time, I would have just continued to work through this process. But, two things, that we talked about having people, um, informed as early as possible so they can start planning for their next year. Those folks that are gonna work in the district, they need to know what they're gonna teach and where. So that was one commitment. But then there is a, a legal constraint as well. So two things.
Wait, uh, Mr. O'Connor.
What, what was the number of retirements this year?
Oh, gosh.
I didn't bring it, but I can get that.
Was it in the 30 to 50 range approximately?
Higher, I think.
Higher? Okay, um, next question, I guess. I know it's not a, everything doesn't work on a perfect curve here, but, um, you know, assuming a 700 student loss at 30 kids a classroom, that's 23 teachers. And this is 109 and we had 50 retirements, that's 150. I mean, what's, what's this going to do to class size?
It is. In the beginning, we said that we were only going to, um, assign so many students to a classroom. And that's still our goal, is that we don't over subscribe the number of students to, to a particular teacher. That's the projections that I talked about we're doing, right? So we, we actually look at how many kindergarten students, how many first grade do we need split classrooms, and actually count bodies. And then we come up with how many teachers do we need. And so Buchanan is an example.
But that, to me, the breakdown just doesn't seem to be adding, adding up.
It does, until you actually go through and count bodies and the number of staff. Otherwise, you just do it across the district, a blanket.
Mr. Ross, then Ms. Slade.
Is this, are there, um, I guess this list is a combination of highly effective, effective. I mean, I'm just curious, are there a lot of highly?
There are no highly effective teachers on that list.
Not sure what list you're in.
Um, we have, there's 36 minimally effective or ineffective teachers on that list. The rest of them would be effective, but there are, every highly effective teacher in the district has been placed.
Yeah, just curious, what's the, um, I guess the dollar representation with these layoffs? Let's say if they weren't called back for whatever reason. If our, if our projections right now were accurate and, um, these weren't called back, what, what, what does that represent dollars wise?
I haven't figured that out.
Help me understand the question. Julie Davis, maybe come up. Tell me more, Mr. Ross.
I'm just curious on what, um, because when we look at the budget, of course, there's so much for, um, instructional staff. And obviously, if these people weren't called back, that, that number would be lower than maybe what we, um, budgeted for initially. I'm just curious. I don't even, uh, if it has any impact. Curiosity question.
I think, so let me, let me help you get out of the back way and then tell me if I answered the question. Um, we figure about 12 teachers. If they are the, the, uh, more senior teachers, it's about a million dollars. Right? So if you did it in bundles, right? Makes sense? But if we are talking, um, uh, teachers with lower seniority, we do an average. We buy teachers on an average. But if we did dollar for dollar, that dollar amount would be much lower. So it, it kind of depends, but we do an average in the district. Um, and with the number of teachers on the list that I have, many of these people, well, on my list, I have some minimally effective and ineffective teachers. We will start with the, um, effective teachers that will be back. And I say 50, it could be 60. I just, the number's with me.
Ms. Slade?
Yes, I have, um, another thing that you might want to speak to a little bit. It isn't just a teacher's a teacher's a teacher. There's also certifications and credentials. And so you may see more people. You know, if you were just talking all third-grade teachers, that that's one thing. When you're talking a chemistry teacher, a first-grade teacher, preschool teacher. You know, so, so all of that weighs in. It becomes very complex.
Yes, yes.
But I thought I'd add that piece too.
That's, that's a great piece. That is. The board that Mickey is, uh, talked about earlier, we look at not only, uh, the evaluation, but then we look at certification. We also look at what classes of students, if it's high school, what teachers do we need? And then if it's elementary, where are they certified to teach? It's like a puzzle that we continue to put it together.
Dr. Randles?
I have, uh, well, my first question, I have two questions. So if somebody else has a question, they can, um, jump in again on me. But the, my, uh, initial question, uh, what was the process like last year? I, I, um, I guess just to help people understand that you're, this is a new, this is a new system that you're using in terms of trying to minimize the number of people that you've laid off in, in the outset. Um, so that people feel comfortable. Some have their assignments perhaps by this time. Um, and so to compare that to what it would have been last year, um, may be helpful. So people are, you know, feeling, um, that they're still left out in the cold and we may call back up to 50% of the teachers on this list. But so people understand what it would have looked like last year compared to.
Great point, great point. In the past, um, you know, seniority did rule for a long time. And, um, with our new policy, we are looking at evaluation. We've always laid off based on projections, so that part isn't new. What is new that we're trying to do, one is we don't want to start the school year with a bunch of subs. That was, um, a commitment that you all made. So we want to get people in place very early. The commitment that I made is for secondary, for high school teachers, we said we would not tell you in September what you're going to teach. They didn't have a chance to prepare. And so I heard the teachers and so we are trying to do those two things. We also believe, um, and are trying to get people in place because whether you're teaching middle school, special ed, or elementary, we believe you should have a right to know. Will we have everyone in place by, um, the end of August? I hope that we do. I'm sure there's gonna be people that resign or, or what have you, retire. But for the most part, we want staff members and GRPS to know, you're with us, you have a job. Even if that means, and I, and I can say this as a superintendent, there will be cases where we may have 10 or 12 students in a classroom and may have too many teachers. Then we need to decide upfront what's our process going to be. Because in order to have every classroom ready with a teacher, ready to go, this is the Grand Rapids Public Schools. There will be students that will not show up. And so those teachers, we will need to figure out what to do with that group. And is that a group of 20 or 25 teachers that agree to become the permanent subs for the year? Or, um, you know, I, I don't know what we would do. But it is a moving target. It is a moving target, um, to place people. But our commitment to the staff members, to families, and to these children is to get as many people in place because we would like our teachers to send a letter to say hello, my name is. I mean, so that's the goal. And it's, it is different than we've done it in the past. You know, in the past, we've sent a layoff letter and if you got called back, oh, well, and good luck. And we're trying not to do that.
Second question. Is it okay? Yeah. Uh, well, actually, she brought up another point here. Permanent subs. Why can, uh, people have talked about not having long-term subs. Is this just sort of a legal term then, permanent sub versus, uh, a teacher then being hired on to be that teacher for the classroom for the, the year?
Yes, there's two things. There is a legal term with permanent subs. If you are in a classroom, and I don't know the legalities, but if you're in a classroom for so many days, you get a contract. I'm saying upfront, let's hire people. Give them a contract, teach them the Grand Rapids Public Schools way. We spent over $2.5 million on subs anyway. And so why not hire these people? They've gone through training. They have been on our payroll. They understand what we're doing with the Danielson Rubric, with IFL, and other things. Let's give them a contract. That just, to me, is just good business sense, but.
And then one final thing, um, maybe. And then one final thing, um maybe, the uh computer uh ends up um sort of placing students initially? Is it sort of a, a computer-generated model? And then this is the fine tuning that has to happen, there's no, you guys haven't been doing this, plugging eighteen thousand students in, oh, so long it's?
Right, the computer does it based on, but what we did do this year, we sent a, a form home asking in May, do you plan to return to Grand Rapids Public Schools? And so that helps us begin to um take some of this, the mystery out of waiting to the last day, people come in and roll. And so we're putting those numbers in um so we can better project. And then the computer does this thing. But in addition to that, there, there are some things that we just know, right? We've been in the district a long time, and we know certain schools, an example is City. You're not going to have two hundred people sign up for City and not show up. They're going to show up. And so even though we take the number of students and divide it out, we know we're going to be at capacity at that school. Blandford and Zoo and Economicology, we're going to fill sixty slots. And so that's the human element, there's some, some things that we know. So we won't say for a Blandford or a Zoo, you're going to lose three percent of your students or, you're not going to. And if you do, we have twenty-five on the list, right? And so we just know that, but the computer doesn't know that. We need to go through and we look at that, we spend the time to look at these spreads, she's going to say, okay, what do we know?
Mr. O'Connor, then Mr. Legrand.
Have all the, all teachers that were highly effective or affective been placed at this point?
All the teachers that are highly effective, yes, not all of the teachers that are effective.
And the only reason I ask it, I've, I've had several staff who've indicated to me, and this is just them telling me that they were considered highly effective as of today, still not knowing if they have a, an appointment or not.
I would like to know who, but we are, we're sending out to everybody again their tentative assignments, even if they weren't affected through this last process. So even people that were assigned in their buildings, just so everybody knows where they're at.
But I would ask that if you, if you do have teachers calling, that you suggest that they call HR.
Uh, yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Legrand?
No, sorry.
Mr. Ross.
Um just uh curious on that um piece about uh ensuring that people aren't left in limbo and calling back and having too many teachers as opposed to not enough. Um and with the risk of even having a, a teacher in a small class and then maybe needing to reassign. Just want to be clear, were you saying that if that, in that scenario, um if, you know, Mrs. Johnson is called back and she's in a, uh winds up in a class, only twelve students, then she would be offered an opportunity to maybe do something else under a permanent sub sort of piece?
Mm-hmm, because once, once we get to a certain uh point in time, we owe people a job. And so at that point, we could make the decision, either we leave that particular teacher with only twelve students or that teacher becomes a part of this permanent sub group. And I don't want to call them subs, but whatever we call that group of, of teachers.
Teacher pool, whatever.
Right?
Okay.
Um but that would be a board decision. And so if, if you end up with forty teachers, too many, just making that up, and our enrollment doesn't come in, but you choose to spend fund balance to maintain that as opposed to laying off in January, that would be a board choice. And I would be okay either way it go. I think it would be awful nice to have, even if we had some classrooms with twelve or fifteen kids in it. So I would err on the side of let's keep them and see what we can do, but that's just me.
Thank you.
I have a question, my question is, uh is there a policy or procedure as to getting information to the uh GREA at a, at an appropriate time?
Great question, there is.
There, there's, it doesn't say within an appropriate time, but the contract just says without complication, doesn't say within a timeframe. And we have um generally tried to give notification for layoffs in July every year, so we're trying to at least get that out as quickly as we can as well as the assignments.
That we're aware of.
I have a, I guess a little bit of a follow-up to Pastor Moody and Monica's question. I just, just about the process going forward for next year. As we know, seniority has always ruled this process in the past, so this is new on how we're going to determine um who is going to be laid off. Um will this stay consistent next year? And will the timeline look the same? And what measures do we have to communicate what that process is? So I, it takes a while for it to be internalized by teachers so they know, you know, some of it is the uncertainty that's causing understandably a lot of stress. So will we have a, is there any possibility of having a um sooner timeline? And will the process be consistent?
To be honest, we would prefer it was sooner rather than later, because it's a lot of work for us as well. And certainly, we're not holding things up to cause any angst down.
No.
Um so if we can get it done sooner and the information out sooner, that's all the, that's a lot of work that has to be done leading up to the start of the school year, so. Um you know, I, I certainly don't want to give a date, but I would, you know, sooner rather than later. Superintendent Yell has been very consistent on get the information out as quickly and as accurately as you can. Um which is why we kind of held up, we've actually gone a couple of weeks beyond the date that we had initially tried to, was our initial shooting for date. Um but because we wanted to make sure that we were going through and double checking, so we weren't giving people the wrong information.
I guess I was just curious as to whether the fact that this is both a new process and we're in the ma- midst of a major restructuring, whether that um made it even more burdensome to do this, this in a timely fashion?
I think there's several things, one is it is a new process. Um but more importantly, we are trying to, I have asked that we get the assignment letters out much sooner so people can prepare. Um I think it would be horrible to be told in September, you're going to teach algebra and you've not had any information all summer. And so um to really get that information to teachers is really, has really been my goal. Um and so that's, that's new for the district as well. It is also new for us to say that we will start school with teachers in our classrooms. I mean, we always have many, many subs the first day of school, we're really trying not to do that. We want to start teaching on the very first day. Um and, and I want to honor staff, I want to honor the teachers um so that they have their assignment, but I don't want to jerk them around. Teachers have shared that that was difficult for them, they thought they were going to teach one thing, and then we switched and said, oh, now I need you to teach some. I'd rather do it right the first time. And I, and I do believe that um by next year, Dr. Fogg, we will be better at this. This is very new for us, um and HR is to be commended. You know, it's early and we have assignment letters out, and so people can start planning. Um and it is our intent that the next group, we will get to them as quickly as possible. We will not hold that up at all, we'll get to that as quickly as possible so people know. And then those people that will not have a job, we owe that to them as well, to let them know.
Mr. O'Connor.
What is the, uh, what's the anticipated timeframe for the, I mean, if, if for the, for a layoff, a hundred and nine people tonight? What's the, and, and you're projecting fifty people being called back? What's the projected timeframe for those fifty people to be?
Probably within the next eight or nine days. We just fell short of uh having the projections, the information, we've worked on it twice already.
And what is our, and what is the legal requirement for the, the layoff resolution as to when it needs to be done by?
No, but what's their, their drop dead date? Sha- Sharon, um.
Thirty days from the start of school?
So then we, well, you could actually hold it a little bit longer, not much longer, but you could hold it, and we could get it done at the August fifth.
We have, oh, a couple more weeks. August fifth.
Yeah, if the, if we wait till the August fifth, so that's why we wanted to do it now, and that way people know they can plan just in case.
We can check though to see the drop dead. I would, it would be nice for me if we didn't have to do this. I mean, I'm okay either way it go. I don't want to send people a layoff notice and then turn around and say that you're back, it's just I was running out of time.
The concern is that we would have to reconvene if the August fifth was too late, and we have members that are.
That's right, that's right.
Can we just make a motion to maybe hold this vote until latest evening since we're still here? To give them time just to check on that drop dead date?
Is that going to work?
And Paul can probably give us a drop dead date.
And we can.
I don't have the contract here with me.
Don't be a motion to table till later in the meeting.
Thank you, Mr.
Support, you support that?
I support it. Yeah.
Go ahead, oh, go ahead.
Uh mo- motions, motions to table the layoff resolution till uh the end of this uh current meeting.
Before the break though, not after the interview, sir?
Um I was thinking whatever.
What, what, how long do you think you need?
It can be be.
Okay.
Okay.
Mickey can go and check real quick.
Yeah, tell, tell, just before the break, the scheduled break.
That's fine.
Any discussion, oh, no, no, not for table, go ahead, call the, call the vote.
Uh, Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Dr. Randles?
Yes.
Mr. Ross, yes, Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Legrand?
No.
Uh Pastor Moody?
No.
Um President Fogg?
Yes, it's fine, we're voting on it later, a few minutes later.
Motion passed six to.
All right, um it's another, another item on this. Okay, thank you, that's all right. Okay, so we have now two action items. Um we have policy twenty-two fifty, the superintendent's evaluation, second reading, final adoption. Do I have a motion to support that?
Make a motion to support the adoption of the second reading of the evaluation policy two-two-five oh, superintendent's evaluation policy.
Support.
Any discussion?
This is um just going through our process that we've gone through already since our cameras rolling. This is just part of the formal process of setting a robust evaluation tool in place that um some of us have worked on more than others, but has been worked on a long time.
There's no further comments, Mr. Ross, can you call the vote?
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Dr. Randles?
Yes.
Mr. Ross, yes, Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Legrand?
Yes.
Pastor Moody?
Yes.
President Fogg?
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
Thank you, I, I just want to say another thank you for um, to Ms. Slade for leading the ad hoc committee to put that into policy. I really appreciate that. And uh Dr. Baker for the work he did on the tool last year that um informed a lot of that. Second uh action item is uh the purchases, do you have a motion for that?
So moved.
Support.
Uh any questions, comments, deliberations?
Do you think we can just get a quick, uh, for those that don't know, uh, just as the Middle Cities is a quite substantial dollar amount? Um just an explanation of exactly what that is for the public so they understand?
Is it for the membership deals?
Yes, the Middle Cities Risk Management Trust.
We are, Grand Rapids Public Schools, we actually are one of the original um members of Middle Cities. It's the Middle Cities uh superintendent's group as well as um many other members of my cabinet are um included in uh that membership. Meeting with other Middle City districts across the, the state of Michigan. We meet on a monthly basis, um and as superintendents, we meet about twice a year. Um to, we learn from each other, we push, we share. Um it is a membership that uh has been very valuable to the district and one that I appreciate.
Thank you.
Mr. Ross, can you?
Uh, Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Dr. Randles?
Yes.
Mr. Ross, yes, Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Legrand?
Yes.
Pastor Moody?
Yes.
President Fogg?
Yes.
Motion passes eight zero.
Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Support?
Support.
When you're ready, you can call the vote.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Dr. Randles?
Yes.
Mr. Ross, yes, Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Legrand?
Yes.
Pastor Moody?
Yes.
And President Fogg?
Yes.
And passes eight zero.
We have no discussion items, do we have public comment on non-agenda items?
We do have one, uh, from Mr. Paehelder.
So I've had a little breathing time now, so hopefully this will come off a little calmer. Um I, I guess I have a couple of questions for the board to consider. Um but before I do that, uh, I want to talk a little bit about the evaluation process. I know there's been a lot of complaints about it, uh, people felt it was unfair. It, it certainly ties into who's on the layoff list, but it's a separate item. Jennifer Jones, uh, whose name I am using with permission, uh, is a teacher over at Shawnee. Uh Jennifer is in fact the lead teacher over there, recognized by the administration and her colleagues as uh being the person who would be in charge when the principal's gone. Uh she does the trainings for her staff, for Reading Street, for some of the technology, for some of the other things. Um she was rated effective and not highly effective, even though she is a highly effective teacher. Um she's on your layoff list, by the way. Uh you know what, I'm not going to do that, that's not fair, I, I'm, I'm cheating. I'm not going to jump into layoff in non-agenda. Um I am going to say this, though. Uh in bargaining, we talked a little bit, uh quite a bit in fact, about trying to guarantee class sizes. And we were told that that wasn't going to happen. We have suggested numbers in our contract that lay out what the recommended numbers are uh in order to, to help achievement. Uh but those are not guaranteed. Um tonight, I believe I heard that we have a number that we are setting for how many students we're going to go with uh for these classes in the new schools. Um and I, I guess I would like to know what that number is. Um beyond that, uh I guess I will say the substitute teacher pool, uh I was, I was happy to hear about that idea. We had had a similar idea uh for some time, uh it's not exactly the same, though. Um rather than hiring people in to be permanent subs and train them to be permanent subs, our thinking was if we have people who are, are without a job position already, who are already trained and are in fact certified teachers, why don't we do that? I had mentioned to John uh a few months ago, uh as we were talking, uh he and I, he and I do that. Um what would be great is if for once we actually overhired a little bit. Because we run into this problem at the beginning of every school year where people disappear, they retire at the last minute, they, they find a job working in another district, they, you know, take off for any of a host of reasons. And then we have these classrooms where we can't find anybody, and it's tougher to hire during the school year. Okay, because most places have all their hiring and people in place in April. Uh wouldn't it be great if we overhired a little bit and had a pool of actual teachers, highly qualified individuals, who could then fill in for teachers who were pulled out for a training or were sick or whatever it happened to be? So that, that day of instruction wasn't lost. The Cambridge report pointed out that the average uh, uh teacher in GRPS was uh out of the classroom. It was, I can't remember the exact number, it was an obscene number, it was something preposterous, okay? Uh I want to say like sixty days or something insane like this, uh which is crazy. And we know already that the sub group that we're working with does not always supply GRPS substitutes. Uh people sometimes take the jobs and then don't show up, oftentimes we can't find anyone to fill the job because they can take it at any other district.
Mr. Haldar?
Am I out of time again? I'm sorry.
You can take a moment to make some.
Summer hours and.
You can take a moment to make some concluding.
Here's my conclusion. Uh if, because I'm, I'm hearing uh the, the expression that we're out of time uh to make decisions on layoff, if we do decide to go this way, uh there's no reason why we can't put those folks into a, a, you know, teacher without a particular home base type of a thing. They would stay under the GREA contract, they keep all their rights, they keep blah, 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 and they float. Uh that might be a solution to what we're doing here. I, I know it doesn't help our ESP brothers and sisters. Um I don't know, you know, what they want done, but it may be a solution for us, thank you.
Mickey? Do you have permission to just come back up real quick?
I did go double check and I, I wasn't here when uh Mr. Haldar started, so I don't know if he had, had mentioned it, but it is thirty calendar days from the start of the school. I did go double check and I, I wasn't here when, uh, Mr. Helder started, so I don't know if he had, had mentioned it, but it is thirty calendar days from the start of the school year, means that the next meeting isn't until the fifth and start of school is September third. We fall a little short.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to support the action item, uh, for the layoff resolution?
I see.
You didn't talk about that.
Okay, okay.
You have a motion? Uh, action item. We are returning to our action item, the layoff resolution. Do I have a motion to accept the la- layoff resolution?
I move that we accept the layoff resolution.
Do I have support for that?
Support.
Discussion?
Just a real quick question. It sounds like as we were just thinking, considering the possibility of postponing, uh, the vote, I'm trying to, and I know we'd have to have a special meeting, but I also can't really, I was trying to think of possible benefits to postponing it, but it sounds like the only benefit would be those teachers not worrying about it, even though maybe they ought to. And secondly, um, by the, by the next meeting date, we know specifically which ones, but yet those people would be informed anyway, so. I guess I'm trying to think, so there is, really isn't much reason to, to just go ahead and support this at this time. Yeah, I don't know.
I'd add, yeah, I'd add to that logically, yes, we have a smaller list, but whoever's on that smaller list has, is going to have to wait longer to, in uncertainty, so, you know, there, there are upsides and downsides here, and I think you're right. I think, uh, Dr. Baker's right, they, they roughly balance out here and don't give a compelling reason to wait.
Okay.
Any questions? I guess I just want to comment that I, I felt that my colleagues' questions were, were good, and I especially appreciated how, what you've conveyed to us in the process. And I appreciate all of the work you are doing and the values that underlie that work for placing, for respecting, for balancing the respect and the needs of teachers and their work context and placing the very best teachers in the very best place in our district. And I know that's informing all of this great change in process, and I'm appreciative of it. Mr. Ross.
Call the vote, uh, Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Dr. Randles.
Yes.
Mr. Ross, yes. Ms. Slade.
Yes.
Dr. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. LaGranne.
Yes.
Pastor Moody.
Yes.
President Faub.
Yes.
Action item passes eight zero.
And, uh, we have no discussion items. Uh, superintendent's comments?
I would just like to assure, uh, this board as well as all of our staff members, um, in the, the entire district, we will work, um, as quickly, as effectively and efficiently as possible so that everyone is notified. So where, when it comes to projections, our grant dollars, we are doing everything we can to place people because we do understand that, um, it's a very difficult position to be in, but I am committed to that.
Board member comments. Mr. LaGranne.
Uh, yeah, just a couple. One, I continue to hope that our public comment will be changed from saying non-agenda items only at the end to saying agenda or non-agenda items. Simply because if people suffered through this whole meeting and listened to us analyze things and think we did something wrong or want to tell us what they think about what we just discussed, I'd like to hear from them on that. So I don't want to just hear from them about global warming or the height of the trees outside. I want to hear from them about what we're actually doing.
I'm thinking there was some wording in the policy, but anyway.
Well, let's fix it.
I, I hear it.
Because I, because, and, and even, you know, our, our student, union rep, uh, union president tonight pointed out that he was deviating by talking about something on the agenda. Well, I want him to be able to talk about things on the agenda.
Right, I agree.
Uh, and this, well, and the second thing I'll say is that I don't consider Mr. Helder a random member of the community. He was elected by his representatives to speak for them. So, Mr. Helder, if you ever run out of time in a public comment and you want to ask, I will always bring a motion for you to extend your time. I can't promise that the vote will succeed, but I will, I will always bring a motion to extend your time for you, anytime you want. Now, sometimes you may want to be curbed and you may want to all.
All right, okay. You got it.
What, if I got three minutes?
We've got interviews to do tonight. Of course, what's a few more hours out of your life, but anyway. Dr. Randles.
I am the guy who wanted.
It's Dr. Randles.
No comment.
Mr. O'Connor. Ms. Slade.
Yeah, I'm going to speak to Mr. LaGranne's. I did briefly, very briefly. You know, it was put in there to, to solve another problem, and maybe now it's past due, so I appreciate you bringing that up, although when we go until ten or eleven, you will be the problem.
We, we had a fourteen-minute meeting while I was on this board. I'll point that out.
No further comments.
And four of it was his, uh.
Pastor Moody.
No comment.
It's not true.
Dr. Baker.
No comment.
Mr. Ross.
No comment.
And none for me. This portion of the meeting is temporarily adjourned. Uh.
Wait, do we need to?
I think we need to go forward.
We need a little bit of a break before we start the, are we fifteen minutes?
Just lined up.
Yeah.
Your dinner is down.
So we're going to have to, you know, uh, our first interviewee. Mr. Ippel. Ippel. Fifteen minutes late, we will be starting, all right? Thank you very much, Mr. Ippel.
Thank you. Because we went so long in discussions.
My apologies to the candidates. We are running a little behind and we want to be very, uh, fair that we give this, the exact same amount of time for each candidate, so we'll just be pushing this back. Before we begin, I just want to go over a little bit of how this is going to go about, um, with both my colleagues and the candidates here. We have developed seven criteria that we have come to consensus with, that we will be using to evaluate the candidates, and, uh, we have developed eleven questions to support that criteria. We are going to be going round robin. Each, each board member will be asking a question and candidate will have time to answer that. I would ask my colleagues to keep in mind, be cognizant of the criteria at all times and perhaps take note which criteria you see being supported when the candidates answer their questions. We are allotting twenty to twenty-five minutes for each interview with a short break in between with no deliberation. Our deliberations will come at the end. We will not be formally ranking candidates. We will simply be deliberating and discussing, uh, how we see the candidates, how we see our criteria supported in the candidates. And, um, at appropriate time, there may be a motion regarding a particular candidate after the end of the interviews. So, um, Mr., is it Ippel or Ippel? Ippel, correct. First of all, do you have any questions? Just in general about the process? Okay, thank you so much. Um, are we ready? More to that. Ms. Slade, will you begin?
Certainly will.
Thank you.
First question, big one. Why do you want to be a board member? How would you enhance the boards effectiveness?
Well, thanks for the opportunity to, uh, meet with you this evening. I did have a chance to listen to your deliberations prior to this, so that was, uh, interesting to, I've seen you on TV, but I've never actually seen you in person, so, thank you for that opportunity. I, I want to serve my community. Um, as I said in my application, I'm retiring from Network One Eighty. I've been a member of this community most of my life, lived here for most of my life. And worked in a number of different capacities in the for, the not-for-profit and the government sectors. And one of the things that I've observed is how important, uh, Grand Rapids Public Schools is to our city, to our county, and to the region which we live. Our schools need to be successful, but especially our Grand Rapids Public School needs to be successful if our community is going to be successful. Um, and so, uh, to me, that's, that's a driving force. I've worked, as I said, in the nonprofit sector, primarily in administration. Um, my background actually is in social work, um, but I worked at Hope Network for fourteen years, almost fourteen years, and I've been at Network One Eighty for the last eleven years, involved with people with special needs in our community. And both of those organizations have provided an opportunity for me to, um, develop my administrative skills. I've worked with large organizations, large numbers of employees, worked with directors and boards of directors. And, um, that has been a good learning experience, I think, for me, um, both from a management side, but also from a board member's side. In working with those boards, um, I've learned the, uh, have a clear vision about what the board's role is and what the process should be. I believe that a board really represents and is the steward of our community resources and is really ensuring that these resources are serving all of our community, um, that we have a responsibility as board members to listen to parents and students and other members of our community and make sure that we share a vision about, um, what our school system needs to be and how we're going to make it better and improve it. I've had a broad knowledge and, uh, experience with a lot of the public and private sector resources in this community, um, and I've seen how those resources can be used to effectively address some of the non-academic or educational issues that, um, families and children in our school systems face. And I think especially in an urban environment, we know that when kids come to school, um, they bring many of their other life experiences and problems with them. And it has not been uncommon where the school has had to spend as much time dealing with non-academic issues as it's had to deal with academic issues. And what I've seen is, uh, that the, by using community resources effectively, um, we can help our schools become more effective and allow our teachers and students to spend more time on learning and not addressing some of the other challenges that they face. I have a passion about kids. I know that, uh, our children need to succeed. I have three children of my own. I have seven grandchildren. Um, three of them are in the, in, in the Grand Rapids school system. And, um, they're the most important part of my life and our lives, and we know that the success of our children will really determine the success of our, our community. Um, and I think the other part of this, the reason I'd want to be on the board is that I recognize that it takes our entire community to, to educate a child. The student needs to be with us and working. The family needs to be engaged. The teachers need to be proactive. Our administrators need to be supportive. The support staff needs to be there. We need the faith community around us. We need the business community around us, the government commu- community, the foundations, all of us. If we're going to have effective school system, especially an effective public school system, um, we need to do that in community. And that's what I tried to do when I was at Hope Network. That's what I tried to do as, as I've been at Network One Eighty. Um, have we always been successful? No, but we have great resources in this community, and I think that Grand Rapids Public Schools has always used those resources. Sometimes there've been so many resources that it's been difficult to manage all of them. Um, but I think doing that efficiently can really make a difference in our school system.
Thank you. I, as we go through, so just to, um, be cognizant of time, um, that was a big question and a very big answer and great. Um, so if, uh, maybe, some of these might be repeat over some of that, so maybe highlight those as we go. Mr. O'Connor?
Thank you. Provide examples of how you have worked with the community or schools and the results of that work.
Thank you. Um, I think all of you know about the Kent School Services Network, and Network One Eighty, um, was very much involved in, in this process. Uh, in fact, uh, I can't even remember. I think it was about nine years ago. Uh, Superintendent Neal, when she was in her previous job, um, worked along with, um, folks from the mental health system, the county, the foundations, the health, the health system, the, uh, court system, and, um, and DHS to really develop the Kent School Services Network. And, um, now today, next year, we are, we are hoping there will be twenty-seven schools in our county that will be receiving services through the Kent School Services Network. I think you're all familiar with this model, where it's a community school model, where really having mental health services, uh, um, health services, DHS workers, and a coordinator in those schools, really trying to make sure that the non-academic issues of those schools get addressed. So I think that's a great model, and we're starting to see some really good results. We're seeing better attendance by some of those kids, and I would be the first to emphasize that, uh, this is all done in partnership with other folks. So the impact that, that Kent School Services Network is not in isolation to every, all the other community resources that support this effort, but I think we are seeing some positive results. Those schools have had better attendance. Um, we're starting to see hopefully some better schools, some, uh, scores by the kids. I know from the mental health perspective that we have been able to serve, provide, uh, more, uh, mental health services, uh, to more folks, especially a more diverse population than we've had before, so it's working as a way to really support, uh, our community. A second area that we've been involved in, uh, at Network One Eighty, we, uh, received a community grant from SAMPSA, which is a, um, a federal agency, but a six-year planning grant, a million dollars a year for six years, to really coordinate and focus on severely and emotionally disturbed kids in our community who are, uh, receiving a lot of supports, both from the school system, the mental health system, the court system, uh, and the DHS system. And trying to really focus on helping those kids in a coordinated, wraparound way, uh, making a difference in those kids' lives. And we're starting to see their scores. We use CAFIS scores to measure their progress, and we're seeing those change and improve for those children. I've also been, uh, fairly involved with the Kent County Family Children Coordinating Council. Um, I served on the executive, uh, committee with that group, and that group has really been instrumental in trying to, as a community, uh, focus on the needs of kids in our community. The, the County Prevention Initiative that they've been engaged in, two million dollar initiative that's been going on for a number of years that really focuses on kids that are in the, uh, foster care system, keeping kids out of the foster care system, but also trying to prevent and reduce it, uh, delinquency and, uh, abuse and neglect in our community. The Early Childhood Initiative that's more recently occurred to really try to make sure all of our kids are, when they get to school, are prepared and can start kindergarten, uh, ready for school. And then now our latest effort is around the collective community impact, where we're really trying to look at, um, how, um, we as a community can have common goals, agreed upon outcomes, using collaborative funding, um, to change our community numbers to, in children, so that children in our community can succeed. So we're really trying to coordinate and collaborate in a different way.
Dr. Randles.
Are you familiar with the district's transformation plan? Tell us your opinion of the plan.
Uh, yes, I did.
Can I get the whole question?
Okay.
And what role should the board play in ensuring the plan is successful?
Yes, I did have the opportunity to review the plan, and, um, it seemed like a, a very, uh, good plan, uh, as, as I was able to understand it. Um, certainly there are, um, uh, the, I think the stra- I think we really, as a, as a, as a public school system, face a really difficult situation. Where we've had a large number of schools scattered around our community and our enrollment continues to go down, and so to, how do we restructure the system to try and be as effective and efficient as we can moving ahead? And I think the transformation plan seems to be a, a strategic approach to be able to carry that out. I guess I did have some questions about the plan as I read it, and I don't, as I said, I'm certainly not an expert about this, but just some of the questions that I had were, I know one of the things that was built into the plan was the elimination of the expanded school year, uh, schedule. And, um, you know, I think in, in education, and again, I'm not an ex, I'm not an education person at all, so I'm speaking as, from my background, but, you know, it seems to me that, that the, the school year is something that we have inherited from our agricultural, uh, heritage, and, um, we need to move beyond this. And so I thought, I was a little surprised that, um, that, that the expanded school year and knowing that kids, um, lose, uh, progress during the, their summertime, that that seemed, it's, it seems to me a bit backward that we are not moving all of our schools toward a more, uh, expanded school year schedule. You know, I think another, uh, factor that I was wondering about for the future, and I think the, the plan obviously is a bit short, short range, but, you know, where are we really going with our planning for education for the future? And how do we, um, really begin to strategically locate our educational opportunities for the future? You know, our schools are based on history, where you, people used to live. Uh, and so we've, we're trying to retrofit. I always thought it was about this for myself. You know, I live in the Garfield Park area, and there are three public schools and there are three charter schools within a mile of my home. I don't know if that's going to be a core area for education for the future, um, but just as an example, you know, we have a lot of hope for downtown Grand Rapids, and we're starting to see more families receiving more individuals, any singles and perhaps couples moving into the urban, the city in condos and apartments. What are we, what, what's going to happen when we get to the point of having families in our urban, in our city area? Where are they going to go to school? Where are they thinking about school? So I think while the transformation plan, I think, is really good, I think the question becomes where are we going beyond this? And how do we, and it doesn't just end there. I think the city is a, obviously, a really important partner with the, with the schools. How are we planning where libraries and other, uh, community facilities are going to be? Another challenge that we know we face is that many of the kids in our urban school system are moved from one school to another during the school year itself. And are there things that we can do from a planning perspective, I think especially from a housing perspective, that is going to allow people to be, uh, remain in a common location so that their education can be sustained in one location? Terms of the board's role for this, you know, I think you need to, the board obviously needs to provide public support of the plan. Um, they may need to monitor progress. needs to provide public support of the plan, they may need to monitor progress on the plan implementation, they need to review any modifications needed, I think they need to publicly celebrate success, and they need to privately address failure. And there needs to be an even longer-term strategic plan, I think, to develop for the future if we're really going to be thinking about where is our schools going to be 20 years from now, 25 years from now.
Wendy's not the only one who gets to caution you on time, so you can feel free to answer shorter for some of these. You can feel free to answer mine shorter. But can you tell some of your thoughts on, you had mentioned charter schools in your neighborhood, can you talk a little bit about your thoughts on charter schools and public education in general?
You know, parents want the best education possible for their children, and they now have choices. And, you know, I think that has been a challenge and an opportunity. I think that parents want their children to thrive and succeed in school, and if they have confidence in the local school, they'll be happily place their child in that school. If they're concerned about safety, learning environment, staff turnover, lack of predictability, they'll explore other options, charter schools, schools of choice, and private schools. So, you know, I think when you look at the transformation plan, I think you can see many creative opportunities that have been created for parents. So I think that's a really good, from a perspective of competing in this environment, but I think we also need to work on some of the other areas that we talked about. If a parent or a family does not have confidence, if they've seen neighbors, if they've had children in a school system, and they've had their parents go to, if they've had children go to a school, and they've met the teachers and had confidence in those teachers, and they know that those same teacher's going to be there next year, and this principal's going to be there next year, they're going to be excited to and committed to continuing in that situation. If they have concerns about that, or there's uncertainty, I think that makes it more difficult. So, and I think the other opportunity, I think this is built into the transformation plan, is how do we use that charter opportunity actually within our Grand Rapids Public School System? And I know some of that's been explored, and we're trying it in a little way right now, are there opportunities to expand that and go ahead?
Mr. Apple, what do you see as the most pressing issue facing the Grand Rapids Public Schools, and what strategies would you put in place to help the board undertake those issues?
Well, I think you've been addressing those a little bit this evening. When you see, when we have to plan for 700 fewer students in the Grand Rapids School System in the coming year, from a manager and from a board, I'm sure this is a very traumatic experience. And the reality, of course, is you have to plan on something, it could be more than the 700, it could be less than the 700, and how do we actually then manage and plan for in that situation? So I guess the most essential issue for me is we need to stabilize the enrollment in the Grand Rapids Public Schools. We need, we need, we need to get there, because otherwise we're always facing the financial issue and the repercussions of that reduction in available resources. There's obviously other things that are really critical, attracting and retaining quality teachers, principals and staff, the diversity of the staff. I think those are also really critical. But, so what's the board role in doing something about this? You know, I think one part is advocating for increased state funding, another is informing and educating our community about the quality of school options at GRPS, another is monitoring the progress on implementation of the transformation plan, including strategic discussions about areas of underperformance. And then there needs to be some strategic thinking and partnership that's going to impact enrollment. I mean, it's easy to say we're going to try to stop that reduction of 700 kids, but what can we actually do? What can we do as board members? What can we do as community resources to bring about change? And I think the community partnerships that you have explored in the past have been beneficial in that regard. And then how do we even advocate for collective action on school reform at the KISD level, at the county level? Because of this whole family mobility issue, our kids are going to Kentwood or Wyoming and then coming back to our schools. That cycle is affecting everybody. So how can we do this in a collaborative way?
Provide one example of a time that you collaborated with others on a project, and talk briefly about your role and how you approached working as a team.
So I already described the Kent School Services Network, the way that development really occurred was that a number of the, actually, the leaders of the, of the public funding sectors in, public institutions in the community got together under the, at the request of the Grand Rapids Community Foundation, and together did some planning. So I sat on that group, participated with the other folks who were in that process, we developed the plan together, we looked at our own organizations to see what resources we could bring to bear to address those issues. And there's a lot of other people who brought about the results. That wasn't the, I didn't make that happen, but there are a lot of good people, Carol P. McGovern and many other people who have been involved in that process that really have made that happen, and staff from my office and the DH office, H office, and the school systems have been really critical in that regard.
Thank you.
You know, we faced exactly the same problem, question with Network 180. You know, Network 180 is the mental health authority and subsubuse organization that's responsible for public mental health and subsubuse in this community, for indigent and people on Medicaid. And so we have responsibility for the 100,000 people in Kent County who have Medicaid and are poor. And how do we adequately serve those populations? So what we've, we involved, developed our strategic planning process at Network 180, certainly addressed this issue. We looked at the areas of board diversity, staff diversity, leadership diversity, and provider diversity, and set specific goals about how we could accomplish those things. One of the things that I worked on personally as a result of some of the strategic planning was we developed a program we call Project Get Connected, and we identified five African-American churches that we have outreach workers, mental health outreach workers, that are working to identify individuals within those churches and within the communities around those churches to identify folks who have mental health or subsubuse needs that could help those needs be addressed. And most recently, I've been working with the Grand Rapids Community Foundation on creating a Jackie Kleinstaker Minority Scholarship to identify and provide support for persons of color who are interested in getting their master's degree in social work or psychology, and committing, willing to commit themselves to providing mental health or subsubuse services in our community.
Go ahead and drink some water if you'd like, Mr. Apple. We're pushing you, but you have time for water.
That's fine. I don't mind being pushed.
The next question, academic achievement is our core mission. What are some of the conditions that contribute to learning, and what are some of the barriers?
You know, I've already talked about some of these things, but, you know, I think the conditions that contribute to learning and some of the barriers are very similar. So attendance is critical. Kids can't learn if they're not in school. Teachers that challenge, have high expectations, love to teach, can change methodologies based on individual student need, and teachers that feel supported by administration, parents, and community. Teacher training, obviously, is really critical in this process. Support systems that address the non-academic issues, and I've been talking about that before. Someone who demonstrably cares about me. You know, I guess I can just reflect back on my own personal experience in school, and I was probably not the greatest student, but there was a few people in my educational experience who I can still recall today who cared about me and encouraged and supported me. One of them helped me develop my penmanship so people could read it. But, you know, it's those kind of people in your life that are really critical to make a difference. You know, family stability, economic stability, health, all of those things are really critical. And the barriers are really the opposite of those things. When we don't have those things in our community, we're not going to achieve academically.
Provide an example of when you had significant conflict, and what actions did you take to resolve issues?
So we had an experience at Network 180, we have, our administrative headquarters has been on Fuller Street, right next to the Spectrum campus, just off the expressway there, and our access center was on Lake Drive, used to be called Cornerstone. And during my tenure, we were looking at both of these buildings and trying to figure out what do we do for the future, and so I worked with my board and basically ended up with a plan to expand our Fuller Street campus to include our access center. So all of our services would be provided at one site, and our staff would all be located there. And as you can imagine, with building projects, it's a long-term project, and we did have some change with our board during that process, and we're getting close to the point of engaging this, actually implementing this plan, and there was some significant reservation on the board members' parts to go ahead with this. And so that was one part of the problem. The other part was the folks at the Lake Drive site were really liked their location and were reluctant to move over to the Fuller site. So, you know, I mean, you start off by understanding people's concerns, that's the first thing, is listen to people. And then you talk about what's the decision-making process for, what are the processes or steps we're taking to accomplish this? You document the history of what you've been doing, you provide vehicles for ongoing communication of concerns, you develop a plan to resolve those identified issues, and then it's basically a matter of communication. It's communicating frequently and often, and supporting people, because, yeah, we all, adjusting to change is very difficult.
Teacher effectiveness is one of the most significant factors in academic achievement. What do you see contributing to this, and what do you see as barriers to this?
You know, I think, well, let me give you a little example. My time's too short. So, you know, I, I guess I was too young to really experience this, but I, my father told me, when I was in kindergarten, I had a brand-new teacher. And during the first, one of the early parent-teacher conferences, he called my parents in, the teacher called my parents in, and said, you know, you, your son seems to be a little bit delayed. And my father, who's a teacher, listened, and I don't know if he came home and said anything or did anything to me, but he told that story later on. And, you know, it was an experience where, and I guess I did okay. I finished up, and I've been able to accomplish what I've been able to accomplish in life. But to me, that, you know, it was a new teacher with a new experience, first-time teaching, probably first-time parent-teacher conference, probably first time dealing with a fifth-grader who was a bit delayed. And how do you communicate and work with that? And to me, that's what, that's what teacher effectiveness is all about. You know, we're going to get new teachers, we want young, energetic folks in the system, but we need good training, they need to be mentored, they need to be supported, they can't be, they can't do this kind of work on their own. We need to support teachers, and we need to honor teachers. I think one of the saddest things that's happened in our country in the last few years is, and even in our state, is sort of the characterization of teachers as if they're greedy and only interested in looking out for themselves. I mean, how can we have people who really care about our kids if that's what we're going to communicate as a society? So, you know, we need clear expectations of teachers, students, parents, administrators. We need accountability for teachers. I think the new evaluation process sounds like it's a step in the right direction. And we need partnerships and collaboration. To me, that's what, that is what leads to effective teaching. And the other part of it is, I'll go back to my theme, is it's, we've got to free up teachers to teach and make sure that the other resources that are available to support the other needs that kids and families have can be addressed without them being the central focus of teaching. I've heard too often, teachers who are spending their time picking up kids, dealing with the home situation where the family is losing their house, and all those other kinds of issues, which is great, I mean, what wonderful people these are, but how can you teach kids to read when you're worrying about all those other things?
And final question, what else is there that you would like us to know?
I really don't talk as much as I, as it sounds like. I'm a grandparent of two, of two children at Coit School. That's been a neat experience for, for me as a grandparent, and they have really enjoyed that school and have benefited from it. We have a preschooler also who is using some of the special ed services, and that's also been very beneficial. As I said in my notes, I'm retiring from Network 180 next week, and so, you know, I do have some time and energy that I'm willing to commit to the Grand Rapids Public Schools. I know that you have many good candidates for this board, and I believe that diversity is really critically important for a board, and it is important that the people who, who go to Grand Rapids schools can see people like themselves, both on the board and at the staff. And so I have great respect for that going ahead. But I, I have energy, excitement about what this is about, and if I could work with you in some capacity, I would enjoy doing that. I have had a positive working experience in the past with Superintendent Neal, and if I could be of service in this way, I would be happy to do it. And if not, I will find other ways to continue to work in our community to the best I can. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I want to express for our colleagues, we really appreciate you putting yourself forward, and we appreciate your candidacy. Thank you.
Good luck with your process and decision, and thank you for all your work as board members for our community as well. Thank you.
So, that was closer to a half hour for that meeting, so I think we need to allot that time for other candidates.
I agree.
If they would like that, so.
What are we doing with our five-minute break?
Just take a minute to take notes if you need to, and if you need to. Do you have any questions regarding the process at all?
No, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Who did we leave off with? Mr. Legrand, I believe.
All right. So I get the first and second Vegas question. Why do you want to be a board member, and how will you enhance the board's effectiveness?
Thanks for that question. And again, my name is Jamie Scripps. I'm really honored to be asked here tonight and humbled by my fellow candidates here, and it's just been a pleasure, and this is a lot of fun. I'm already having a lot of fun and learning a lot, so, so thank you for this opportunity. So to the question, why do I want to be a member of the Board of Education? You may be familiar with the book, All I Really Need to Know I Learned in Kindergarten. That is pretty much my story, and I learned all of that in GRPS at Kenosha Elementary. And this was a few years ago, but I, I really had a very positive experience at Kenosha, and it was because of the inclusive community, and it was there that I learned to embrace diversity. And this is a kind of diversity in all aspects that you can imagine. It was racial diversity, ethnic diversity, diversity of language, and diversity of abilities. And when I was in kindergarten and all the way through fourth grade, these differences were amongst us as students were celebrated, and we, it was truly an inclusive community in that everyone was welcome, and everyone's contributions, all of them unique, were valued. And that's an amazing lesson to learn when you're little, and it has dramatically impacted how I've grown into an adult. And so I often reflect on my time in GRPS, and I think, I think back on my time at Kenosha Elementary very, very fondly. And so now I'm a parent, and my husband and I actually have virtual jobs, which means we can live anywhere, we can work from anywhere. And we chose Grand Rapids, and we were very intentional about choosing GRPS because of that community of inclusion, and because we wanted that for ourselves and also for our son. I have a son, Jack, who is going to be three in October, so we're thinking ahead to his educational future. And so that community of inclusion and that experience for him is something that's very, very central to, to my desire for him, just because I know it was so important to my, my formative years. In terms of the question, how will I impact the effectiveness of the board? I serve on the West Michigan Environmental Action Council Board of Directors right now, so I know what it is to be a board member, I understand the unique role of the board and in how that plays out. So I understand that board members take a So I understand that board members take a high-level view. It's not about micromanagement, thank you. And it's about having that vision, that long-term vision and staying focused. And that can be the hardest part, not going off on tangents and not being distracted, even though a lot of times you have to react, you're always going to have to react, but staying proactive with that long-term vision and sticking with it and keeping the positive energy high. So, so that's, that's why I want to be on the board and that's why I think I'll be an effective member.
I think you kind of answered this question, but I'm going to ask it anyway.
Sure.
Is this providing an example of how you have worked with the community and/or the schools and the results of that work?
Sure, sure. So I, I am a member of the Board of Directors for WEMIAC. And WEMIAC is a model organization in the community, so I'm really honored to be a part of that, of board. And I think that what happens at WEMIAC is, is a little bit of a metaphor for the, a lot of the positive trajectory that GRPS is experiencing because WEMIAC and its commitment to sustainability and bringing that vision to Grand Rapids and to West Michigan has become a model. It's a model in the state, it's a model in the nation in a lot of ways. And that doesn't happen all by itself. WEMIAC partners and has support from community leaders. It has support from this school district. I mean, it's an amazing example of collaboration, leadership and sticking with that long-term vision, right? The whole idea behind environmental sustainability is being mindful of the fact that the short-term is not the only consideration, that we have to keep the long-term in mind. So as a, as a member of that Board of Directors, I feel like I've been able to learn a lot and be effective in terms of, you know, our involvement in the community. I'm also a member of Westminster Presbyterian Church and I was able to attend today at Alder Middle. There was a parent-teacher community council meeting. So I was able to sit in on that and learn about, you know, some of the hands-on activities that are going to be happening throughout the calendar year there as well.
Thank you. Dr. Baker?
Okay, this is kind of three questions, all right?
Okay.
So first is, are you familiar with the district's transformation plan? And then if you are, tell us your opinion of the plan and what role you think the board should play in ensuring its success.
Sure. I am familiar with the plan. I have it right here. And I think it's terrific. I think it is a fantastic example of being really thoughtful and really intentional about both the short-term and the long-term. I see a lot of long-term in here in terms of where we want to take the district and where we want to take West Michigan as a community. And it ties in, you know, the three values of children's academic success, you know, replicating and expanding what's working and stopping what's not. I mean, that makes a lot of sense. And then offering quality choices that are both academically and financially sustainable. Again, there's that long-term sustainability idea. So I think that those values that underline the plan are really, really critical. And in terms of the board's role, I, I come back to the idea that it's, it's a high-level, positive-energy, long-term focus. So I think that, you know, as board members, I think it's very important, obviously, do, you know, we do our homework, we are mindful of student success always. That's got to be the lens through which, you know, decisions are made with input, you know, from parents and stakeholder, other stakeholders and community members. But it all comes back to students' academic success. And I think, you know, as a board, I think just the most important thing to keep in mind is keeping the eye on the ball, that long-term, because I, because it's not going to happen overnight and it's not going to be easy. And I think the focus is the key.
Ms. Scripps, could you discuss your issue, your thoughts on issues of charter schools and public education?
I think it matters, it all comes down to who authorizes them. Because I think that if you have local connection to charter schools and I think if you have local accountability, I think charter schools can be really terrific assets for the community and really terrific partners within the school district. And so to the extent that GRPS can authorize and has authorized charter schools as part of its strategic plan, I think that's great. I think if it, if it's integrated with the plan, I think that's really phenomenal. My concerns come about when other entities might be thinking about proliferating a lot of new charter schools. And if that is encroaching upon the GRPS territory, that is problematic. And obviously, so in cases like that, I think communication is key. I think collaboration, to the extent that it can be forged, is really crucial. And so a positive example of this kind of collaboration would be the GVSU Covenant House charter proposed for Canpa. I think that that's a really good example of a very unique need being met by a charter school. And it's done in a way that's collaborative and in line with GRPS strategic, long-term strategic plan.
Ms. Scripps, what do you see as the most pressing issue facing GRPS? And what strategies do you think the board should take to undertake to address this issue?
Yep. You know, I think it comes down to the challenge of declining enrollment and the opportunity to attract families to West Michigan. Because we do have that opportunity. It was a key part of the strategic planning in, in 2010 and 2011 was to, you know, the goal of that was to say, we want world-class performing schools and we want to attract and be the choice for Grand Rapids families and West Michigan families. I mean, that's the goal of that strategic planning and that's a phenomenal goal. My family made that choice and I'm so excited about that. I'm excited that I can sit here as an example of, you know, we're on a positive trajectory. This can happen and we can attract more and more folks to make the decision to come to GRPS, to make that choice. So I think it's about, it's, it's about attracting, attracting folks to come to the district. And I also think we face a challenge with the traditional neighborhood schools and making sure that we are investing and making those schools places where parents feel excited and passionate about sending their students or their children. And I think that's a challenge right now because we have bright spots in the district. We have bright, bright spots like City, City High and Middle and the Zoo School. And, you know, there's, there's a lot of cool stuff happening, but we also need our traditional neighborhood schools to work and to be partners with the neighborhoods. And so what's happening in like the East Hills area with Congress Elementary and how that Neighborhood Association is partnering and bringing parents in and bringing, bringing to them hands-on experiences where they can break down barriers, break down negative perceptions that may exist, that's really crucial. Because I think there is, there's a lot of misperception out there. So if we can get parents into the schools and show them the fantastic work that's happening, I think that goes a long way toward this overall goal of making GRPS the choice in West Michigan.
Thank you.
So provide an example of how you collaborate with other type of projects you can. Talk about your role and how you approach working as a team.
A few years ago, I worked for the State of Michigan and I had the privilege of working for the Department of Energy, Labor and Economic Growth. Doesn't exist in that form anymore. But for a while there, it was a very cool place to be because the governor had decided to place the idea of energy and clean energy, in particular, smack in the middle of economic growth and development for the state. And the idea was that our auto industry was in transition and a lot of those manufacturers wanted to transition to this new space of making components for wind energy, solar energy. And so I, I was part of that collaboration between the energy space and the labor space and the economic growth space. The challenge there, and this is actually also an example of a conflict that I, you know, any, anytime you have collaboration, I think you have opportunity and you also have the potential for conflict. The conflicts that existed in this collaboration were interesting because all of a sudden, you know, and I, and I was from the energy space. So I kind of had the privilege of, I was the newbie, but everyone else was really, there was a lot of fear, actually. I mean, that's the best word for it. Fear because they didn't know the language. The energy, you know, the language that we used on an everyday basis was very intimidating to them. So overcoming that conflict of the language barrier, the culture barriers that we were plopped in the middle of this, I mean, the idea was great, right? Let's collaborate. It's always a nice in theory. But then getting over the fear and the change and getting over those barriers, the language barriers, the cultural barriers, that was really important for us to achieve the successes that we ultimately did achieve. I mean, we, we really did move the ball forward significantly within the time that I was there and very proud of the work we did.
The city of Grand Rapids and Grand Rapids Public Schools are very diverse places, institutions. What have you done to promote diversity and inclusion?
So, you know, everything I've done, I totally want to give credit to Ms. Edie, who was my kindergarten through second-grade teacher at Kenosha, because it really does go back to those formative years there and learning to celebrate and embrace diversity. And so since then, during college, I took opportunities to, I participated in a prison theater workshop where I, I was able to participate at the Charles Egler Correctional Facility in Jackson where we worked with inmates there to create a play and put on a play. And it was just this phenomenal experience and definitely increased, increased my appreciation for reaching out and connecting with people from very, very different backgrounds. I mean, it just enriched my life so much. And, and from there, became very committed during law school to working on civil rights issues, did a lot of research to try to get the Voting Rights Act reauthorized and did work with the Michigan Election Law Project where we were trying to defend the voting rights of folks in, in districts where those voting rights were, were threatened. So it's something that I care about. I care about it just because I know that, you know, it's something that I learned to celebrate when I was five years old. And when, once that happens, it changes you forever.
Academic achievement is our core mission. What are some conditions that contribute to learning and what are some of the barriers?
You know, I, I think that expectations are really crucial. I think clearly communicating those expectations is important and holding students accountable. I, I do believe that sustained and directed, directed effort can yield high achievements. But those expectations have to be clear and then they need to be followed up with recognition and you have to keep it very rigorous. So, you know, I, this is very much tied into too with teacher effectiveness. It's very hard for me to separate some of these questions because I think they all like overlap. So teacher effectiveness and parent engagement as well. Parent engagement is so huge. I mean, it came up today in, in concrete terms at the Alder Middle PTCC meeting, just because in talking about chronic absenteeism, but also just parent engagement in general, trying to get parents engaged in constructive ways. It's, it's a constant opportunity, constant struggle, but also something that it was really wonderful and affirming to see such a focus, you know, during, in July, they're thinking ahead to how can we get parents to be more engaged? And I think that, I think parent engagement and showing up obviously contributes to learning.
You already talked about this a little bit, but can you give us an example of when you had a significant conflict and what you did to resolve the issue?
Sure. And to, to provide just a little bit more context, because I did provide the example already of the transition at the Department of Energy, Labor and Economic Growth, but my background in public policy and as a lawyer, a lot of background in alternative dispute resolution and experience with litigation. And I can tell you that having been in a courtroom in an adversarial environment, I'm a huge, huge fan of mediation and any other way that you can solve a conflict. Because approaching it in an adversarial manner is a lose-lose. It's not only emotionally difficult and painful, but it is, it is, I just would never, it's, even though, you know, I'm trained as a lawyer and I can do that, I would never recommend it as the way to go. So because of that, I really embrace mediation and I embrace ideas like restorative justice. And I think that implementing that in schools where you see a lot of suspensions and you see a lot of behavioral problems, it can be a way to actually reduce the number of suspensions and be a positive force for repairing relationships.
Teacher effectiveness is the most important significant factor in academic achievement. What do you see as contributing to this and what do you see as the barriers to this?
So I'm, I'm actually a fan of the Danielson rubric. I think that I was a teacher, I was a teacher at the middle school level. So I'm reflecting on this not only as a teacher, but now I'm a parent. So I'm thinking about what do I want from the teachers who will be teaching my child? But I also was an administrator. I, I, it was at the college level, but I was the chair of a department where I had to evaluate faculty. So in thinking about that, the Danielson rubric, I think is right on. It's, you know, in the, the big tenants talking about preparedness, talking about the classroom environment, the reflection and the professional development and the instruction, the actual communication with the students, I feel like those are appropriate measures. And so I feel like that is, that is how you measure teacher effectiveness and supporting those pieces, that's how you support teacher effectiveness. And then the barriers would be, a lot of the barriers we've talked about. You know, if you have chronic absenteeism, that's a barrier because your students aren't even showing up. Lack of parental engagement, that's really going to get in the way too. As a former teacher, that was a huge issue. It's, you have to have engaged parents and then navigating that relationship when you do have an engaged parent is also really, really critical and getting the most out of that relationship. So I think that all of those, all of those factors, if you support those factors, you're going to support teacher effectiveness.
All right, this is the last question. Just please tell us anything else that you'd like us to know.
I think that's it. This has just been a lot of fun. I really appreciate all the work that you do as a board. I'm excited as a parent to be in GRPS. I'm excited for my son. I'm excited for me and my husband. It's just an exciting time and I feel like we're on a positive trajectory. And I would just say, keep it up, keep, keep focused because we're counting on you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scripps. Do you have any questions for us regarding procedure before we begin?
No, thank you very much for having me.
All right, thank you.
Well, good evening. Could you tell us why you want to be a board member and how will you enhance the board's effectiveness?
So I think that you're, as a, as a board, are faced with a range of really exceptional candidates today and we differ in a large number of ways. We differ by age, race, sex, background, and in a lot of other ways. I think all of us could contribute effectively to this board, but I feel strongly that to start this discussion, you should make this choice not by questioning who deserves it, but who can be of best service to Grand Rapids children alongside you. That is, I want to make it clear that this isn't about me or any of us, it's about our kids. And I don't want to do this for myself, but I want to do this because I think I can help our children thrive. I would bring you a number of skills, including my knowledge base with respect to child brain development, intervention design, standardized testing. But I think the biggest thing that I would offer you is substantial experience in being an innovator inside the big box. That is, I know how to think like an entrepreneur while, that is in the sense of reading the market and responding to environmental pressures, while knowing how to interface and function effectively in a complex, large organization like this one. I've done that a number of times in my past as an engineer and I'm doing that today, innovating for kids with autism at Hope Network. In particular, my work there emphasizes mission-driven entrepreneurship in the nonprofit sector. Grand Rapids, Grand Rapids Public Schools is likewise a large, mission-driven organization in need of innovation. What I think I can do to help you is to help the leaders of GRPS innovate within this big box. And as they create game-changing educational solutions, I can help big box and as they create game-changing educational solutions, I can help them engage and captivate the public attention so that they can get the community support they need to succeed.
Thank you.
Dr. Krishnan, provide examples of how you've worked with the community and are the schools and the results of that work, if any?
So, one of the first things that I did when I came onboard Hope Network, uh, a few years ago was I really felt there was a pressing need for, uh, professional education in the autism space. And, uh, I had been there a few months and I didn't have a lot of resources, but I felt it had to happen immediately. And so what I did was I really banded together with a few people I knew well. We got out our contact books and we started calling people and we set up our own educational series and we started making that available to, uh, people in the community, professionals, families and others. Uh, it started out in a very small grassroots kind of way. I, uh, had to pick up the pizza myself, a couple of the dads and I had to put the chairs away when we're done. I, I recorded videos of our lectures, uh, on my cellphone and put them on YouTube. Uh, but it created a space where parents and professionals could start networking with, on the topic of autism. And it's been something that we've collaborated with GRPS professionals, with the intermediate school district and with others. And as we've extended that, it's really become a hub for people to have a conversation in the autism space. And so I think that my biggest experience in collaborating isn't on the high level in a directorial or administrative way, but I have a lot of experience collaborating at the grassroots level, working together with the people who want to make a change across these organizational barriers.
Thank you.
Dr. Krishnan, so are you familiar with the district's transformation plan?
Thank you.
And tell us your opinion on the plan and what we should, what role the board should play in ensuring that the plan is successful.
I am familiar with the plan and I'm starting to be. It's, it's a big plan and I'm sure that if I were to join you, I would continue to learn about it over time. I have two layers of responses to that question. Uh, the first layer concerns the part of the plan that has to do with, uh, uh, reducing the school footprint. Uh, I think that's a really hard decision. I don't think any parent wants to see a school in their neighborhood die. I don't see any person who doesn't have children want, want, I don't think any person who doesn't have children wants to see a school in their neighborhood die. But I also don't think that given the realities about the student enrollment in GRPS, that was really something that the superintendent had a lot of choices about. I think it's something that no leader wants to face, but every good leader has to face it and most of them will, uh, address that kind of situation largely in the same way that Superintendent Neal did. The second layer of my response has to do with the second, uh, part of the transformation plan and that is to reinvest in the schools that have not, uh, delivered on the growth or innovation that we've wanted them to, to recognize the excellence, the pockets of excellence within our school system and to extend them and take that excellence and transform the rest of the school system. And then finally to engage the community in excitement about Grand Rapids education. Uh, to be honest, that's also really not something that, uh, your superintendent or you as a board had any choice about. We have to do all of those things. We can't, uh, function as, uh, um, as a city and as a school district without those things. The question really is how do you do those things effectively? And I think that, uh, the superintendent has a great plan to do that and I support that plan. Uh, I think that what the board can do to be effective is to demand rigor as that process extends, to demand rigor and in analyzing the schools that are performing well, the teachers that are performing well and the processes that are performing well and how they are going to be expanded to the rest of the school district. Uh, the other thing that the board can really be doing there is to engage the community and really engage the community in the conversation that the survival and the prosperity of this school district is not just a choice that you make, it's not just a choice that the superintendent make, makes. It's not even just a choice that, uh, the, the, uh, the body of, um, employees of GRPS make, but it's really a decision we make together as a community. And so if we can get that community engagement, then I think that that's how we support that plan. More broadly speaking, plans come and go and as the environment changes, there will be need for future transformation plans. I think the fundamentals are going to be the same. We need to build a school district that people want to educate their children in so that, and we need to deliver results to those families so that ultimately we can have, uh, excuse me, we can have a city where, uh, people are fighting to get into our schools and then when our children finish at our schools, uh, universities and colleges are fighting for them.
Good evening. Discuss your thoughts on issues of charter schools and public education.
Uh, I've been learning a lot about that recently and I think the first thing that I would say is that the public has been pretty clear that charter schools are something they want. But I think when you look at that more carefully, what the public is really saying is that they want, uh, options in education, uh, and they want an opportunity for their child to have an innovative, high-performance education. Uh, I think those are good things and to the extent that the charter schools can deliver those things to our people, I think that they are a good thing. Where they can become a concern is more, a couple of things. One is when, uh, you look at the charter schools as a whole, on average across the nation, they don't perform any better, uh, or any worse than the public school system. Some of them perform very well and some of them perform very poorly. To date, we haven't really succeeded in generalizing the innovations of the charter schools. So the first thing that's very important is we're funding these charter schools with taxpayer money. We do need to demand that they, um, are part of a process that allows for generalization of the innovations and successes that they have so that those are all delivered back to all of our students. Then the second concern is I do think there need to be rules for fair play, meaning charter schools should not be cherry-picking students. They should not be, um, causing an erosion or cavitation of the public schools that result in an unsustainable system where a lucky few or privileged few have access to a very high-quality education and that education's essentially on the backs of other children who are not lucky enough, uh, to have access to a charter.
What do you see the most pressing issues facing, issue facing GRPS and what strategies do you think the board should undertake to address the issue?
So, uh, with apologies for a bit of a cop-out, although I think the others before me have done kind of the same. I think there are actually three closely interrelated issues, uh, and they need to be discussed, uh, together. The first is declining school, the student base, uh, and that will make sustaining a system the size of GRPS, uh, impossible. And it threatens us with a situation where we're in a race to the bottom, where every year we talk about successive belt tightening until we no longer have a functioning education system. The second piece is the variability in student outcomes with a dramatic range between our highly effective teachers, as you were talking about earlier today, and other teachers who are not performing at that level. With our variation between your exemplary schools that receive international attention and your schools that are, uh, failing to, uh, provide high-quality education to their students. Uh, again, we need to be rigorous in analyzing why that occurs, extract the generalizable components of these success stories and essentially broadband them so that all of our kids are getting that benefit. Uh, and then support the administrative leadership to make sure that that actually happens. The third thing then again is deciding that the, as a community, we support education, not just by complaining, uh, but by banding together around our young people and taking it on ourselves to contribute and commit to their success. You as a board again are an interface between the community and the school system and I think it's particularly important to pay close attention to this issue so that, uh, between the GRPS leadership and the board, uh, we can do two things. One, drive a strategic, top-down, uh, approach to engage the system and drive education. And then two, to drive a grassroots, bottom-up approach with the community, uh, that also drives education from the bottom. So if those two meet in the middle, then we'll have students again, uh, who perform very, uh, well and, and who are highly desired by educators and employers.
Um, apologies to the, to CJ and, and other people who are going to hear the same question six times. They start sounding a lot less interesting the third, fourth time around. Um, but can you, um, give us an example of the time you collaborated on a project? Now, you already alluded to one, but so free for you to go back to that or talk about another one and talk about your role and specifically working as a member of a team there.
When I was thinking about that, you, I realized I've never really worked in, in an environment where I didn't have to collaborate. When I was bagging groceries at Family Fair as a high school student, I had to collaborate with the cashiers and the other baggers. And really nothing has changed over the course of my career. Uh, most recently in this last couple of years, I collaborated with business people, um, healthcare professionals, families and educators to help the push for passing the autism legislation, uh, that went into effect in October last year. Uh, and that was really a neat experience because, uh, on Twitter, I, I quipped that autism wasn't a red issue and it wasn't a blue issue, it was a red, white and blue issue. It really was, uh, an amazing experience because it was conservatives and, and liberals. It was, um, uh, business people in the profit sector and people in the nonprofit sector working together because they realized that there was not only a moral, but a business reason to be doing this. And when we saw those reasons and we put them on the table together, you know, it really, everything fell together and it was easy to collaborate. So it was a really, uh, really wonderful experience. I was glad to be part of it.
Now, you know, this is a very diverse community and, uh, this is a very diverse city and, uh, this district is diverse. What have you done in the past to promote diversity and its inclusion?
Thank you, Pastor. I think the biggest thing I try to do to promote diversity is to push everyone to understand how they personally bring diversity to the table and also to think constructively about their own viewpoints and experiences about how they are similar or different from those of others, how they can be strengths and how they can be barriers. So I try to listen to people and I try to help them bring out their own unique views. I respect their views, those views even when they run contrary to mine and I help them to be the best them rather than trying to make someone, make them into someone that they're not. Um, personally, I think pairing, personally, I think that that kind of approach of bringing the diversity out in all people is the right kind of approach to create a diverse community, rather than creating a situation where some people are diverse and some people are not diverse or a situation where some people are diverser than other people. I think that when we do that, then, uh, we create a, a false dichotomy, but also, uh, we create a situation in which people are unintentionally developing dysfunctional views, uh, as a part and parcel of our attempt to help them be diverse. And so I try to embrace diversity in all people and, uh, and I found that to be most successful. Uh, one thing that I reflected back on in my early experiences, when I was a young engineer, uh, I got paired with mentors on a number of occasions and every single time my mentor would be an Indian or an Indian-American. And that was, that was nice, but it was always done without a lot of consideration about who I was or what I brought to the table or needed. And it was done without a lot of thought about, um, the relationship between that person and me and, and for those reasons, I didn't find that to be highly productive for me. I think that that kind of thing is the wrong sort of approach to diversity. Uh, I think the right sort of approach to diversity is to build an inclusive community so that people belong regardless of their skin color or race or, uh, background.
Academic achievement is our core mission. Um, what are some conditions that contribute to learning and what are some of the barriers?
So some of you spoken in praise to short answers and I think the short answer is good teachers, right? And it really is as simple as that. When I lead, uh, and I have good people, I see one of my most important jobs as being getting out of the way and letting them do what they do well. And I think that that's equally important for our teachers. We need to do that in a way that doesn't give up on coaching them, on mentoring them, on nurturing them and on holding them accountable. But I think that the big thing that we can do in order to build a powerful system is to have really great line people like teachers and paraprofessionals.
Can you provide an example of when you had a significant conflict and what actions you took to resolve the issue?
Uh, when I was a young engineer, uh, well, actually towards the end of my engineering career, I inherited a program that was in a real state of mismanagement. Uh, and I had actually never launched a product before, uh, but essentially I was tasked with launching a, a part for a car, a truck. Uh, and I had to compress four years of engineering into about six months. Uh, and the product was launching on time and there really wasn't anything that could be done about that, uh, which is a rock and a hard place kind of situation. What I did was, what we did was we really, uh, paired two things. We stuck to the fundamentals. We were rigorous about understanding and prioritizing the things we needed to do, about understanding the things with which, with, without which we couldn't succeed and placing the top priority on them and the resources and the effort on them. And then alongside that, it was a radical transparency that was important. I had to be very transparent with my organization about what we were and were not doing correctly. I had to be transparent with my customer and I had to be transparent with my competitors because the way engineering works, you know, usually if you're working on a project, your competitors are also working in other aspects of the same project. And what happened was a lot of long nights and, uh, a lot of, um, you know, probably some lucky breaks also, but the product launched on time and under budget. And ultimately it did so in a way that reinforced that our processes and our rigorous belief in our, in understanding how to do our job well works even in that kind of situation.
Thank you.
Teacher effectiveness, as you mentioned in your former question, is the most significant factor in academic achievement. What do you see as contributing to teacher effectiveness and what do you see as the barriers to teacher effectiveness?
Well, I think that, um, contributing to teacher effectiveness really is that this is a passion-driven field. You know, uh, there are lots of jobs that lots of us have that nobody really imagines wanting to be when they're three or four years old, right? When I was that age, I played with Legos and I imagined that I would build spaceships for the rest of my life and, and I'm doing something different today. But one of those few things that people know they want to do when they're four or five years old is teach. And so the first thing that drives teacher effectiveness is the fact that people do this not as a job, but as a passion. And I think that we need to nurture and encourage those people, we need to honor and recognize them and we need to build a relationship for them in the community that really places them, uh, at the top of, um, you know, of prestige and respect. Uh, and those are things I think that really contribute to teachers being effective. I think the other thing is aligning the organizational structure to the actual needs in the classroom. Uh, and that's a complicated thing because you deal with unions and labor relations and things like that. Uh, I live around the corner from Alger Middle School and, uh, I have some friends who are teachers and one of the comments they make is, you know, we have real concerns about things like good teachers not being required to stay in schools long enough to be effective. And it's actually the teachers who say that concern and, and at my job, our, our frontline workers at Hope Network, they actually say largely the same thing. And I think that there are some opportunities to build a more collaborative relationship progressively over time, uh, with stakeholders like unions that would allow us to build a structure so that teachers can tell us what works and we can build the organizational structure around that. And I think when we don't do that, then we put teachers in this position where they can't succeed and then we blame them for having failed.
Thank you. Final question?
Well, you know, before you do that, I, I didn't really, wasn't really clear on, um, the, you said some of your teacher friends, something about staying in schools or something like, can you?
So, so for instance, um, Alger Middle School has had a lot of churn, uh, as an example in my neighborhood, uh, leadership churn and teacher churn. Some of that's driven externally, uh, like, uh, the recent changes that happened because a grant ended at the federal level. Uh, but I think that a lot of my, my exemplary teacher colleagues have said that, for instance, lon- teacher longevity, uh, a long-term commitment to a school and to a population is part of what helps them be successful. I'm not a teacher and so I don't fully know how to critically evaluate that myself, but I think we need to listen to teachers about what it is, again, the generalizable content of what they do that allows them to succeed. Uh, and so as one example that I've heard from teachers, it is, um, building a system where they can invest in, in kids over the course of, of several years.
Thank you.
Final, what else is there that you would like us to know?
Oh, I want to thank you again for, uh, considering me and I feel, uh, honored and more than a little humbled, uh, to be considered, uh, alongside the other people that you're interviewing and alongside all of you. Uh, I, um, want to start, close by saying something a little different, which is I, I spent some time thinking about, we spent a lot of time talking about our civic obligation to educate and I, I spent some time thinking about going back and asking why we actually do things like public education. And I believe that we do public education because it has to do with freedom. Uh, as a society, we have invested over more than 200 years in making people freer and making this a freer state. And we've never said over all of that time that Americans are And we've never said over all of that time that Americans are free enough and we can hang up our hats and stop. And even today, there are active conversations throughout the nation going on about how to make us freer. Public education is a great innovation, a technology in essence, because it makes people freer. There's hardly anything in the world that does more to free people than the work you do here that gives them the light of knowledge. And so this isn't about me again, it's about these children, these children who are becoming freer adults in and through our schools. And if selected, it would be my aim to stand beside you and to take up arms in this very different kind of way to make the next generation and the next one after that freer and freer through knowledge. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Fisher. Really appreciate it. Did I pronounce that correctly?
It's Matias.
Matias.
That was very close.
Do you have any questions about the procedure before we can begin?
Uh, no.
Okay, thank you. We add.
Good evening. Why do you want to be a member of the Board of Education and how will you enhance the Board's effectiveness?
Hi. Why do I want to be a board member? It's a great job, isn't it? You know, teachers are depending on you, parents are depending on you, the city is depending on you. You know, you have the future of young minds. You're determining destiny for a lot of, lot of folks. You know, I never thought that I would be in a situation where I would be, I would have the opportunity like this, especially when I think about my upbringing in inner-city Chicago. Spanish being my first language, we didn't have things like bilingual ed where they would immerse you and appreciate your culture. It was, you go to school and you learn. And that's, that's what my parents' expectations were of me with my Spanish, no English. And then the teacher's view was, you're here to learn English. And so, so I sat in a classroom for about three years, really saying not much. So to be sitting in this room, y puedo hablar español si quiero, so I'm bilingual. And it amazes me that I have the opportunity to, to maybe guide and give some influence to decisions that are, that are being made on behalf of the, the community. I think for me too, I, as a parent and certainly an educator and professional, I think that I would be able to bring some expertise but also some experiences to, to this board. I happen to work in a public school, although I'm not employed by it. And there are some advantages to that. Very exciting in the sense that I partner with the principal and the administrators there to remove barriers for, for our students that we serve there. I have been a board member before. Currently, I'm on the Network 180 board as a non-voting board member. And again, that, that has its advantages because you can certainly say a whole lot of things that people would not expect you to, but because you're present there, you get to, you get to influence that and certainly that's exciting. I've been, I come out of Chicago. I lived in Grand Rapids for 15 years and I also pastored here as well as Chicago and El Paso. So I think I bring a diversity of experience to the board that I think hopefully it'll be a fresh outlook but also tempered with some experience.
Provide examples of how you have worked with the community and/or schools and the results of that work, if any.
Well, most recently, I was in the Latino Resiliency Group, which was a 42-hour work group that was designed by Future, Wild Future, that looked at the Latino dropout rate within the district. And what was exciting about that was that it was really almost every facet of our community that came together to address the issue, to look at why are, in particular, and I think it's beneficial for all students, but why are our Latino kids dropping out at such an alarming rate? And it is alarming. And so we could have, we could have complained about all of the injustices, but we were, we were there to look at, how do we find solutions? And, and not only did we look at our best minds, but we also went back to the community and we asked it to give us examples of those things. And that was a collaboration between GRPS, between professionals in the community, between businesses. And so it was really, it was, it was exciting to be part of collaborating like that.
Are you familiar with the district's transformation plan? Can you tell us what you think of it and what role you think the board should play in it?
It's a, it's, it's a very ambitious plan. And certainly with the closing of some 10, 10 schools, that's a lot of communities that have been affected and certainly in seeking to try and, I think, grab, grab what you have in terms of the students that are, that are here, that are remaining and then those that are, that have left. So I, I think it's very ambitious. I think that it was born out of necessity. If we don't do something, we're going to sink. Not only that, but when we do something, we have to keep our citizens in mind. And not only that, but we also want to now keep what we have and then attract those folks that, that have left for whatever reason. So I, I think it's, I think it's ambitious. I think it's a, it's a good plan in the sense that it's, you know, the district is seeking to, to look at fiscally its responsibility, but also look at innovation and look at how it works within this city and, and how it's growing and the families that are moving into this community. And it's looking to put a stake and say, we're, we're here to stay. And not only that, but, but we can take the ship and redesign it in a way that it can make, rather than large loop turns, it could, it could make a turn, so to speak, on the dime. And I think that's, that, that's a challenge that, that you have as a district in this transformation plan.
Can you discuss your thoughts on the issues of charter schools and the public education?
You know, that's interesting because, you know, public education, we, you know, we don't have the choice to say, I, I want, I want that student there but not that one there. The, the task is educate our citizens. You know, educate our citizens. And, and so, so charter schools, parochial private schools can have their mission statement that says, and then they're going to attract who, who they may. Public schools can't say that in that sense. They, they have to take who's at the door and then begin the awesome task of, of educating that child to whatever they become. In, in terms of, that's what happened to me. They, they took me as a, as an inner-city Puerto Rican kid in inner-city Chicago and began to, to educate me and give me the fundamentals that had made me partly who I, who I am today. To, to me, that, that's, that's pretty amazing. I think that charter schools certainly, as has been said before, they, they have a niche, but it, it seems that often people come back. And, and we've seen that even in our school. They've left for whatever their reasons were and then they came back. And I think what, what they have found is that, is that the public schools meet them where they're at and, and try to remove the barriers that are there and then try to deal with, with what is going on in the child's life or in this case, educating, educating the child. So I think that charter schools are here with us and we have to, in a sense, compete. You know, I think the bottom line is this, if, if we have a product, so to speak, that, that people desire, they're going to come to our schools. They're going to say because there's diversity there, because they're educating my child, they're giving them opportunities, they're giving them resources and connections that are going to help them get along in their education, so.
What do you see as the most pressing issue facing Grand Rapids Public Schools and what strategies do you think the board should undertake to address these issues?
Hile. The most pressing issues, wow. Parent involvement, staff morale, district culture, classroom size, lack of resources, disjointed efforts, cumbersome processes, you know, you all, you all know that. And, and back here, you know, they know that and certainly our communities know that because our parents come in and they tell us, you know, this, this is what I think is going on or this is what I think is wrong in so-and-so's classroom. But I, I think that the most pressing issue is that, that we have to resurrect what public education means and opportunity for all, you know, and, and that's partly in the mission statement that you have. You're seeking to take a child, a diamond in the rough and, 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 you know, at the end of high school, hopefully they're, they're, they're ready. I think some of the challenges that we're facing, for example, the dropout rate among our students or even our students graduating and really not, not able to compete at the college level of where, where they ought to be. And, and none of us are, you know, none of us have blinders on to, to those realities. But I think, I think that we want to do better. You know, we, we've mentioned parent involvement or a welcoming atmosphere at, at the, at the school level where parents feel like, like because we're entrusting our kids to you, we certainly want some accountability there. And, and I know as a, as a parent who has kids in the district, I, I take that very seriously. I, I would not hesitate to go to the principal's office and, and my son is sitting back there and he'll tell you, no dad, don't, 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 because you're going to embarrass me. But I think that's part of what it means to be, you know, to be a parent and that accountability. My taxpayer dollars are paying for your salary. And, and I sometimes remind them, not in a haughty or contentious way, it's, it's that, this is a collaboration and, and I want, I want something for my money. I do think that there are, for example, class size is, is an issue, a concern. When teachers have a, a large class size and then they have to figure out, okay, here are my highest performing, here are my lowest, here are kids in the middle, and somehow I have to divide my time into that as a single person, you know, as a single person educating that child, let's say at the fourth grade level. So if they don't have a parapro, if they don't have parents, you know, volunteering, they have to come up with that. So here I have to put this child and that team to work, then I run over here and work with my lowest achieving and then somehow at the end of the year, they're going to be great students. That's a, that's a huge undertaking. As been mentioned, I think, I think our teachers come at it from a passion that they want to take that child and transform them and be that transforming agent. I think too, the, the, the culture of the administration is, is I think another concern. Again, being able to respond to things that are happening in, in our community, whether it's fiscally or whether it's classroom issues or whether it's a concern for safety for our children, but to be able to address those issues in a way that, that's expediated, that, that has results and, and move on and go forward. I'll, I'll stop there.
Okay, thank you. Can you provide an example of a time when you had to collaborate with others on a project or task and talk about your role and how you approached working as a team?
One of the ways that I collaborated was when I was at an administrator at Kelvin College. I was there, the first Assistant Director of Multicultural Admissions and Community Relations. You know, they tend to put all those, you know what I'm talking about. But, but one of the things that, that occurred was that, well, on several levels, but what, what occurred was that several students in the classroom setting were, were put on the spot by the professors to, in a sense, given account of, of them as African-American or them as Hispanics in this majority culture classroom setting. And they were one of the few minorities students that were in there. They were, you know, in their 18, 19s, you can imagine, feeling very uncomfortable responding in ways that, that folks thought, those students thought was definitive. Ah, so-and-so said it so. And after several occasions, they, they came to me and said, John, I'm really struggling. What, what do I do? And I had to figure out how to help those professors become more culturally competent and have skills as well as the broader Kelvin community to begin to address those issues of competency, of cross-cultural issues and also for the students because, yes, they might have been there on scholarships, but they were also putting out money for their education. And what we did was we, we came up with an advisory group that began to address those issues both on the student level but then also on the professor level and then eventually became part of, of, of a movement in the school to become much more multicultural. So, so it took a lot of collaboration to, to begin to form that and make that happen.
You've answered a lot of this already throughout your question, answers, but perhaps you can elaborate. This is a very diverse city and school district. What have you done in the past to promote diversity and inclusion?
I've been part of, of being involved in, in the broader community as well as the Hispanic community. The Latino Coalition is a collaboration of professionals at various levels that meet once a month to address particular issues to the Hispanic community. So I'm part of, I'm part of that group. As I said, I sit on the Board of Network 180, really looking at the mental health issues of the citizens of Grand Rapids. I'm also part of, at the local setting of our community school leadership team meetings, that's part of the KSSN Community Schools. And what we do is we specifically look at the issues of Burton because that's, that's where my office is at. But we look at the, at, at the issues of our school, Burton, as community partners. And, and our goal is to remove barriers that, that impend on our, on our kids and families. And that's a collaboration of parents, teachers, and professionals. And, and the hope is, is that we were able to respond and adjust to those things for student success, so.
Thank you.
Academic achievement is our core mission. What are some conditions that contribute to learning and what are some of the barriers? You've mentioned a few of them already, but you can expound.
Yeah, I, I, I think, you know, an atmosphere that creates the environment where I want to be there is really a teacher that's exciting. You know, opens, opens up that book and then makes it alive or whatever they're doing, makes it, makes it alive to the student. I think it's an environment, it's, it's a setting where it's appealing, the aesthetics are there and we're fortunate at Burton that we have a, a building that has been rehabbed and, and hopefully that's coming for, you know, some of the, some of the other places where students enjoy being there. I think it's an atmosphere where parents feel like they're welcome and they actually contribute. For example, we have a parent that knits and she was able to use those skills in making little blankets for some of the students in a kindergarten class. You know, that's something that, that they appreciated and that, and that got put into practice because of that. I think some of the, some of the barriers. I think some of the barriers... I think it's student behavior, and how that's addressed in the classroom setting, certainly district classroom setting, certainly with parent involvement, that's critical. That can become a hindrance, particularly if it's a language barrier, as many of our parents face, where because they don't know English, and perhaps because of their lack of education, there's only so far that really they can help. Typically, I think what I've seen is probably the third grade, is when many of our parents who struggle with their English begin to drop off in their ability to help their child. So that means that they depend on after-school or before-school programs to aid their child. I mean, that's their life in essence, because they're not able to do it. Or they depend on their older kids to help out in ways that they can't, unlike myself. I'm able to help my kids. I think that's an issue, certainly that becomes a barrier or stumbling block. I think morale can be that. If teachers feel that they're overburdened with having to not only be a teacher, but now I have to be a counselor, and now I have to provide classroom materials, and now I have to provide something else for my child. And the thing is, is that our teachers are willing to do that, but really should they? And so I think that can cause a strain.
You touched on this a bit earlier, but provide an example of when you had significant conflict and what actions you took to resolve the issues.
I think one of the conflicts that I faced was when I was a pastor in El Paso, Texas. And I came there to pastor in a teen ministry. At that time, we called it co-pastoring. It was between Caucasian and myself. And they brought me on board because the church was growing, predominantly Hispanic, about ninety-six percent Hispanic community in El Paso. And the church began to grow, and so they thought it was a good idea to bring a Hispanic there. And it was intentional that it was gonna be a co-pastorate, not one here and one down here, it was gonna be co-equal. We're gonna have decision-making power that was co-equal. And as the months ensued, we put into place strategies of outreach and so forth. We began to meet as a board and began to address some of the issues and concerns and so forth. And what ended up happening was that there was a clash between myself and my partner in regards to, can we really do this co-equal thing? And I had to face the reality that, oh my God, what have I gotten myself into? I moved, at that time I lived here, I moved from here to, you know, a couple thousand miles away. And so what am I to do? And really, we began to wrestle with what it means to be just, what it means to outreach into a community of which the congregation itself was facing the challenge of different folks are coming with different ideas of what it means to be a faith community. And the way that we worked through that was certainly through our board and elders. But we also had to deal in terms of each other's and our expectation, and perhaps our understanding of what those things meant. You know, we ended up getting through it. I certainly learned a lot about what it means to be co-equal and not just demand that my way, or he demand his way. Really, it had to be a partnership, and that brought, I think, a lot of lessons for me.
Teacher effectiveness is the most significant factor in academic achievement. What do you see as contributing to this? What do you see as the barriers to this?
Yeah, I mean, our teachers are at the forefront of learning. I mean, that's where, aside from us, who are their parents, you know, first teachers, the teachers are one that really influences our child. And so we need to have teachers that certainly are competent in their skills, at whatever level, kindergarten all the way through high school. Certainly, they need to be bilingual, if possible, competent culturally. You know, it... Education is unique in that we're training human beings and not robots. It's not like we can just program it and, okay, now, you know, we spit out. It's an interaction, and it's dynamic. A kid comes in, something happened at home, and they bring it into the classroom, and the teacher has to figure out, why is Joy responding that way? And perhaps they might pull that child to the side and then find out that something is happening. Partnerships then become really critical. If a teacher can then take that child and say, "I'm gonna send them to so-and-so within our school, a partner in our school, doing their work, now I can get freed up, because I know that they're in capable hands of this partner that's within my school. Now I can focus on that child's education," certainly taking into account, you know, what's going on in that child's life. For example, we had a child in which the parent had passed away. And it had been about six months after that child's parent died. And for whatever reason, that particular day, that child was having a real hard time. The teacher took them aside and spoke with that child. Then that child pulls it out, "Yeah, I really miss my mom." That teacher was able to call one of our therapists who works with KSSN because of that community school partnership. And that child was able to then see that person and work through. That child came back into the classroom, still struggling, but had gotten that weight off, at least for that period of time. So I do think that, as a public school, we have to understand the dynamics of partnership. And our world is changing in such a way, certainly with budgets and, you know, fiscal constraints. We really have to look at these partnership levels and begin to understand that we're not an island to ourselves, we need to include others. I think, you know, some of the barriers are just some of the overburdenedness of what it takes to educate a child and help them overcome some of the barriers that they bring into the classroom in ways that uplift them, and certainly ways that empower the parent too, to be part of that solution.
Anything else you want to tell us?
I think you guys have a real hard job ahead of you, at least from what I heard of the other candidates. You know, I guess for me, it would be a privilege to be able to be part of a board that is serious about making the school district the best. I think recapturing families that have left. Again, I've had the privilege of being on other school boards that were private. And so for me though, realizing that in public education, the task that we have is to educate all the citizens that come to our doorstep. We can't say, "Yes, you," and "No, you," we have to say yes to all. And I do believe that we can say yes, and we can do it well. I think as a board, certainly, you're the face of our community because you represent us. So you have to go back and, you know, talk to folks, and they talk to you. So for me, again, it would be a privilege to be able to serve in this capacity. I think I bring some cross-cultural experiences, as well as in my education, and also my passion to see children succeed and see their families succeed. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you very much, Mr. Diaz.
Have any access to blankets?
Welcome.
Thank you. It's a real privilege to be here.
If you have no questions, then we will proceed.
Please do.
Thank you. Esther Moody.
Yes, this question has been asked throughout the whole entire evening. Why do you want to be a board member, and how will you enhance the board's effectiveness?
Well, I'll try not to tell you everything all at once, and to keep it and pick up other pieces. But the key things that come to my mind, it's an opportunity to contribute. I'm real bullish on Grand Rapids. I've been a lifelong resident of Grand Rapids. I've been involved in the Grand Rapids Public School system from the beginning. My father was a teacher in the public schools before me, so from day one, I guess about schools has always been part of the conversation. And I didn't know what that meant at that time, but as I proceeded through my life and my career, I think that I can see how important it is, what a difference it makes. And it would just be a huge privilege to be able to contribute. Maybe there's payback in there, whether it's pay it back or pay it forward, or however you look at it. Why, I've gained a lot. My life in Grand Rapids has been wonderful. And not to say that, you know, steamy hot summer afternoons aren't interesting, or the fourteenth of February last year, but those kinds of things come and go. I've had the opportunity to travel around the country and around the world to some extent, and gave me the opportunity to look back at Grand Rapids and say, "You know what? This is a pretty great place." And the credo and the guiding thing of my life is to help. If you ask me to do something, I'll drop whatever I'm doing and help out. If you got a tire flat, I'll change your tire. If you've got something else that needs doing, I'll do that. I'll help with your computer while I'm your guy right there. So anything I can do to help. And so this opportunity came along, it's at the right time for me with my career and my situation, where I am, I've got the time, I've got the energy, I've got the enthusiasm to do this. And I think that I can be helpful to the board. My work, and you've had a chance to read my resume, all of my work has been involved, and I've learned a lot about systems thinking, looking at the big picture. I think I can help with that and bring that to it. Not that it isn't here, but I can contribute to where you are, you've got to look at that. I think that my business experience maybe is the thing that I think of most importance and maybe greatest value to the board, because one of the things that I've learned and I've observed about education is we need to be very clear about the purpose. And the purpose certainly is about educating kids, people of all ages, whatever the situation is. But I think too often, we forget about the purpose of that. And I'll talk in a minute about your transformation plan and the purpose that's stated there, and I get really excited about that, so I'll try and wait for that piece in particular. But it is about, so that they can be part of the community, be a successful part of the community. And I think that that probably means that they gotta get a job, or at least have the ability to get a job if that's their choice. Because what I've learned in my work and my observation of what goes on is if we've got more people working in more jobs, because we've got more businesses, we're better off. I've lived in Grand Rapids when we've had sixteen to eighteen percent unemployment, and I've lived here when we've had four percent unemployment. And you know what? Four percent was more fun. The roads were in better shape, we had more money to spend on schools, and things were just a little bit brighter. Not that we didn't have things to do, but that makes a difference. Public schools have to be part of that and have to contribute to that. And I really want to help with that, and I think my experience of interfacing with the business community, I've worked in the social programs in the community, the programs that I ran at the college were about people who hadn't been successful, had no educational success prior to that, so I've worked in that. But I've worked in the business community, and they want us to do, Grand Rapids Public Schools and all of education, to do a better job for them. It's critical to them, more critical today than it's ever been. And we need to be part of that, and I think the work that I've done and the experiences that I've had, I think I can bring that, but put it in a context of education. And that was the most valuable and important learning, and I'll get to another point where I'll talk about that that can be helpful, so I want to be here.
Thank you. Can you provide examples, and you've been referring to some, and I see some in your letter, provide examples of how you've worked with the community and the schools, and the results of that work?
I guess on one side, I've worked with the community, serving people. I started out as a school teacher, but then my career, particularly at the community college and the specific part of the college that I was involved in, were occupational training programs. And so these were programs that were very small, federally funded in the beginning, and that were designed to be helpful to people who hadn't been successful and had really little prospect of going to work, and that we needed to try and do something. Well, we found, and the success and the statistics bear it out, that we were very successful doing that. It grew the programs from a very small start to a point where we had fifty full-time professionals, dealt with several hundred people a year. And the vast majority of those were able to get a job, get a good job, get a good-paying job as a result of that kind of work, dealt with all of the issues that they had. We dealt with people in prison programs, we dealt with people from backgrounds with the program that was Great C Now Asset Bad Breaks operation, and dealt with those people. But at the same time, were able to make an impact on businesses, because we could show them that we could provide people, and there was a flow of people that had the skills exactly that they needed and the knowledge to come and do the work that they needed to do, so that business could be successful. So I think that we've interacted with that very much, involved with the Right Place Program from its inception, was part of the startup of that at the college, brought numerous grants to the community. I'm a pretty good grant writer and worked pretty well at the governmental level to bring money in. The West Michigan Manufacturing Technology Center wrote the grant with some other people across the state for twenty-three million dollars that centered in our community, and numerous other activities. So I think that those, I've been involved in the community and continue to be, and look forward to having additional opportunity.
Well, I'm happy to vouch for the opportunity to talk about the transformation plan. So you can please tell us about your familiarity with it?
It's... Sorry, I can't.
I'm sure you've heard the question already, but...
It's the most exciting thing that I've seen the schools do as long as I can remember. I walked by the pictures, I know all the superintendents have worked with all of them from Ben Bucom. I don't know the first two, but the rest of them. Couple very, very good people in there, all good people, some better. And some had more even positive impact. I think that this is the best thing that I've seen. I think I can be helpful to implement it, and I mean, I was just so excited when I'd read it when it first came out, went back and read it now as a part of this, and thinking about coming here and saying, "Well, what's going on when I'm part of it?" And it's very clear why West Michigan needs GRPS success, and it ties it to the business community, ties it to the success of the business community. So it's about the results of education that we need to produce a quality workforce. We need to, you know, affect the quality of life in our community, and education can do that. And so that aspect of it, and that aspect, and what I can bring particularly to that is what I think is the thing, my greatest strength and greatest benefit to it, is tying that together. Being able to talk to businesses and get beyond the nice conversations, the general conversations, and say, "Well, all that's fine, because at some point, we have to get to what exactly is the work that's going on, and what exactly and measurably and objectively are the skills and knowledge that someone needs to do that work?" That's what businesses are looking for, they gotta have people that can be productive. And what I've said, and by talking to hundreds and hundreds of businesses, they don't pay people for just being smart. They can't do that. They need people who can help that business, they need to be able to pay those people, they need performance, and they need to do that. So I mean, we've gotta do that, gotta give people all the opportunities for the rest of their life, but we gotta help them get a job at some point. Or what I've found is when I look at the skills and knowledge that are needed to be successful in the workplace, and in my work at the college, and what is it that we're looking for at the college, and certainly the recent reports about the remedial education required, people going to college and what have you, the same set of skills and knowledge can serve you exceptionally well towards being successful in college. the same set of skills and knowledge can serve you exceptionally well towards being successful in college. And if you can do the same things, you're going to be successful whichever path that they choose. So it isn't one or the other. It's a well-prepared for both. But you got to make sure that they have the ability to get a job. Whether they get a job now or go to college and get a job. You all read the same things I do. A number of people go to college and get a degree, have a difficult time finding a job. So we got to be a little bit realistic about what's going on. Look at the results. And this is about results. So I think the Transformation Plan is great. Lots of things in there, lots of difficulties that got to be dealt with. But a lot of my work has been with the Auto Industry Mission because it's a big part of where we are and the transformation that they've had to go through. They had to close some plants. They had to make some tough choices. But you know what? They weren't going to survive without it. It's shown that if you do the right things, build the right product, people will buy those and in face of tough competition.
You, I just want to try to encourage you to perhaps limit your answers.
That was my big one there.
Right.
Try to be less enthusiastic.
No.
I'm sorry.
Don't do that. Don't do that. I just want to make sure.
My wife told me the same thing before I left.
I want to make sure we have even time for everybody, so. The next question is about the charter schools. So Mr. Schroll, what are your thoughts on charter schools in public education?
I wish we didn't have any, okay? And I wish we didn't have to have any. But the reality is, it's what took place because of what wasn't going on and because parents and others didn't feel that they had the opportunity or had the involvement or had the control or what have you. But we have them. So then I say, well, if you got that and that's a reality, let's figure out how to work with them. Because they've had some struggles, but they've also had some successes. I think there's much that we can learn. Jumping ahead, and I won't go very much into it, but I mean, how to collaborate and how to work together. We ought to be working closely with them. They're not the enemy. They're working with the same community. They're working with the same people we are. And we ought to learn the best lessons that we can. We ought to share with them. Grand Rapids Public Schools is doing great things, too. Later on, I'll tell you, I don't think we tell enough of that story, but that's what's going on. So I think that charter schools are there. They're a reality. We got to work with them. We got to be a team. We got to be collaborative. And they're just part of the picture at this point. So, okay, good. Here we are. It's like we just dropped in and here we are, move forward, and how are we going to make it back? I'd like to think that a goal of Grand Rapids Public Schools was to be more attractive and that we would see that there'd be more kids coming to Grand Rapids Public Schools and that maybe there wouldn't be quite such a great need for charters.
Thank you.
Next. What do you see as the most pressing issue facing Grand Rapids Public Schools? What strategies do you think the board should undertake to address?
I don't know if it's exactly a pressing issue. I think the thing that needs to happen most of all is we need to tell the community what's going on. We need to tell them the good things taking place. We need to celebrate what's going on. For the past few years, the majority of news and articles in the paper and thing has been about something else, it seems. I read it and listen and look. Because of my lifelong interest, I pay attention to these things. I think that there's not nearly enough positive. I think there ought to be positive stories in Grand Rapids Press, MLive, or however, all of the ways that it gets communicated about the good things that are going on. There's thousands of good stories that can be told. And we ought to celebrate what's going on. We ought to get everybody's attitude in a much more positive place. So I think that whether it's a challenge, I view all challenges as opportunities and that that's something that we ought to do about that. Because then I think we can get people rallied around and get people involved, get people helpful, and issues like funding and things when they come up. We don't do good things just the week before we need them to go vote. We got to do it all the time. We got to show that commitment. And I think that's one of the things about the Transformation Plan that we can really build on. Here's what we're going to do. Here's what we're going to accomplish. And you will be better off because not all people that vote, not all people living in the city have kids in school. We got to make everybody happy. This will make everybody happy. It's a better community, a better life.
Could you provide us an example of a time when you had to collaborate with others on a project or task? And tell us about your role.
I think if you certainly, and I know you've all read my resume and see some of the things going on in there, I guess everything I've done, I think, has been collaborative. Certainly with community, I've mentioned some of those. A Right Place on one side, an Asset, and workforce training on the other. I think what key thing that came along and one of my highlights of my career and that I'm extremely proud of is the Applied Technology Center at the Community College. And the fact that we did that collectively with Ferris State University. Now, this was at a time before some of the kinds of cooperation between education was taking place. And as a matter of fact, there were laws in place that prohibited those kinds of things, of sharing funding between a community college and a university. The legislature, I guess, thought they were helping us at some point or something. But working together on that, we were able to get those laws changed. Working together with them, we were able to reach out and generate the kind of funding that it took to put that project in place and to build this wonderful new, in addition to all the great things the college was already doing, but even a greater opportunity for the community, for people, for businesses, and we're better off as a result. So I think that's just one key example. And I don't know, is it conflict question next? But I mean, we didn't go into it with exactly the same view of how things should work. I think you've heard it before, and I say the same thing. Conflict's about communication or lack thereof. If it's conflict, if it's communication, then we got collaboration. So I think that that's exactly where we start and what's, find the common ground. We got to listen. We got to share. We got to be willing to sit down and spend time and work at it. Sometimes we even need to bring somebody else in to help, a third-party arbitrator. Facilitator can be very helpful. That's not bad. That's sometimes good because we all got to get to the same place eventually so that we can coalesce all of our energies and ideas to get the best possible situation.
This is a very diverse city and school district. What have you done in the past to promote diversity and inclusion?
Made sure that programs for which I was responsible, the college and the occupational training program, just as one example, but lots of things went on lots of times. But it's one, a big part, but it's where I was able to, you know, most clearly demonstrate that, I think. Made sure that we had program offerings that dealt with variety of people or dealt with all people that came, and all people of the community that would come, and made sure that we had staff that reflected and looked like the student population and make sure that we had support services, you know, in place. I think of diversity as inclusion, that we ought to include everybody and that we ought to say, what a wonderful opportunity we have to do that. And then it's our job to do that. Now, sometimes that takes a while. So what I found in a couple of instances, had to reach out and identify someone that I thought had good potential as an instructor or support staff in that program, and do some things to bring them along to get them to the point where they could be successful. So it isn't about throwing somebody into a situation that they're going to fail at or that they don't really know how to do that job. We got to work until it's a, it's a long-term thing. It's not just a quick thing. It's not, certainly not quotas or anything else. So it's a commitment and a long, long path that we'll be on to always do that. That's what we ought to always be doing.
So academic achievement is our core mission. You've heard us say this five or six times now. What do you think are some of the conditions that contribute to learning? And what do you think are some important barriers to worry about?
Well, I think one of the most important things that I've already stated already is clearly what we're working towards. What are the outcomes? I'm pretty famous in a lot of circles of people I talk to by talking about outcomes. What are the results of education? What are they actually going to learn? What can they do with it? And I think we've got to be really clear. I'm not, I, I don't believe that kids, parents, most people in the community, and maybe even some of everybody else, when we talk about test scores, I'm not sure we know what that means. I'm not sure how we break that down. I'm not sure that we can say, what are we going to do this week? And so I think that we've got to be very clear, very precise, and dealing with very small pieces of what people can learn. It's what I've found. It's what I've seen, all the educational research that I've done. It's what business has learned. It isn't about taking the class. It's about learning what you need to know. And you've got to do that in order to be successful. So I think first of all, we got to be very clear. Now, I think the other thing we've got to do is to be very supportive of the learning activities. And I try and always remember to say "learning" rather than "teaching" because it is about kids' learning. That's what's important, just to say, geez, I taught that good. I use that phraseology knowingly. That's not good enough. It's about whether the kids have learned. So I'm a big fan of, and one of the things that we can do and board can do and administration can do is kind of turning the organizational chart upside down to me the most important people. Teachers, support staff, counselors, people there. Everybody else is just about making them able to do their job. And I think that we've got to do, and to create that clear belief and confidence on their part, that that's the way it's going to go. It's not, it's not a fight. It's not, you know, a problem. It's about what we want to do, is how can we help them be more successful.
Can you provide an example of a significant conflict that you may have had? And what actions did you do to resolve that conflict?
Well, you probably want me to use examples other than with my wife or kids. But you know what? It really is a lot different in some ways. It's back to the communications. It's about people. And so those things, we've been married, let's see, I'm supposed to know this, 46 years, I think. And so I guess some things are working because we'll talk about it. Not to say that we always start with the same idea, not to say that we always have the same thought initially. It's that we talk about it and work it out. Well, the same thing when we're working with other entities in the community. We may start with a perception that we have very different agendas, have very different things in mind. We have very different pictures of success. But working with agents, we've heard lots of people talking about all the help and support that's provided to the schools. We got to figure out how to work that together. So I don't know that it's conflict as much as it is opportunity, teamwork, collaboration. As soon as you're talking about it, I think it changes it from conflict to collaboration. And I think that's what we've got to do the most we possibly can.
All right, and you again discussed this as well. But teacher effectiveness is an important factor in academic achievement. What do you see is contributing to this? And then what barriers do you see get in the way of it?
Well, I think what helped tremendously is the more clear we are with teachers of exactly what success is and what effectiveness is and that exactly how it's going to be measured. I know there's lots of work that you've been doing. I know it's a challenge. But some of the biggest challenges are from what we've done in the past and what the perception or how things, the systems that are in place that are difficult to change. I think we just got to change a lot of them and just say it's about students' learning. Teachers today in city schools like Grand Rapids, they really care about what they're doing. This isn't the most fun job in the world. So they really care about what they're doing, and we've got to make sure that we're supportive of that and exactly how we're going to measure that success. That's what an effective teacher is, that they've helped students learn. I think one of the other things that we've got to do and look at and consider and that is to get as far as we can away from grades, year-long grade accomplishments or anything that talks about failure. My credo from the beginning and still maintains, that I maintain very strongly is, students really can't fail. They didn't know when they started. So if they don't know now, that, students didn't fail. We didn't do anything to help them. The one thing I remember better from college than anything else in education class was change agents as teachers. It's our job to change. I think the school system is to help them change. And so we've got to do everything we can to help that change take place. And what I've seen, in my experience, of people I've worked with and across the country and with businesses or what have you, as soon as we can get away from these end-of-the-thing high-stakes tests or whatever the terminology is that anybody wants to use, the better off we'll be. Because all we do with that is talk, it's in the paper. How many people didn't? How many people failed? Well, you know what? Somebody could have learned 70%. Now, maybe that wasn't our goal, but you know, 70% might be a hell of a lot better than nothing. So I think that anything that we can do there, what really is effectiveness and how can we help make that happen? Systems change, support networks, what have you.
Okay, Mr. Schroll, anything else you'd like us to know?
Just, I'll reiterate. I got the time. I got the energy. I got the enthusiasm. I got the want to be involved, to pay back. I've worked with boards. I think I can work effectively with you. Me, we all start out the same place, but I think I can do that. I'm sure I can. Because I'm going to listen, and we're going to collaborate, and we're going to share, and we're going to get things done, and we're going to do the same things with the community. We're going to do the same things with our staff, and as a result, our teachers, our students in the community will be better off.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your opportunity. You've got a tough job ahead of you, too.
We do.
I'm glad I'm not part yet, so.
So if you don't have any, do you have any questions regarding how? I didn't know how long you've been sitting here. Do you have any questions regarding the procedure of the interview?
No, I don't think so. I had to notice that you've been asking the questions that were.
I believe I have the first question then. Welcome, Ms. Brain.
Thank you.
The first is a general question about why you want to be a board member and how you will enhance the board's effectiveness.
Well, first of all, I want to thank you all for the opportunity to interview. I know that you had a lot of great candidates, and I don't take it lightly that you wanted to hear from me this evening, so I appreciate that. Why would I like to join the board? I've thought about this a lot, and the bottom line is, I think that education is the greatest gift that my parents gave me and my family gave me, my school district, Detroit Public Schools, back in the '70s gave me. And I would like to be a part of doing that for the children of Grand Rapids. So a couple of years ago, I'm an NPR nerd. So I, a couple of years ago, I was listening to This American Life, which is one of my favorite shows, and, you know, the shows are often thematic. And the theme that particular week was "Go Big." And it happened to be a story about Jeffrey Canada from Harlem. It was the first time I'd ever heard his name. And he talked about how he had been working in the school system, trying to make incremental changes, working with young people, trying to make a difference in individual lives. And one day, he had an epiphany that he needed to go bigger, that he needed to try to affect change on a, oh, thank you, on a larger level. I talk a lot. I need this. That he needed to affect change on a larger level, a more systemic level. And so in addition to his work, one child at a time, he decided to adopt a whole Harlem Zone, and that really spoke to me. And he didn't just say he was going to go big and try to get involved in everything he could. He was very systematic about it. He did research about barriers to education. He studied best practices. He looked at what was holding kids back in the city and really tried to do something big. And so around that time, I was in Leadership Grand Rapids, you know, part of the class of 2010. And we talked a lot about, you know, systems change and rising to the challenge of leadership in the city. And so I decided to go big and to do this. So, you know, I applied when I first got here back in 2006 when there was an opening on the board, and I was brand-new and, you know, nobody really knew me. I didn't know much about the community. And I think in the six years after that, I think I've become immersed in the community and shown that I have a deep commitment and am very willing to roll up my sleeves. How will I enhance the board? I'm sure the answer to that will be woven into the answers to the other questions as well. But I have a deeply rooted passion for education. But importantly, not just for my children, and anybody who knows me knows that I am, you know, I'm not much of a tiger mom in general, but when it comes to education, I'm very, very serious. So my kids are, you know, they play piano, and they're in Kumon, and they play soccer, and they, I'm starting a chess club at my son's school this year because it's very important to me that they have every opportunity possible that I can give them. And I'm fortunate that I have the resources, you know, the time. I have a supportive husband, et cetera, who can help me do those things. But it's not enough for me to just do those things for my kid. And I feel like I could go out to the suburbs. As a matter of fact, people have told me that I'm crazy for saying in GRPS, and you, oh, you should go out to Ada Vista. My husband and I speak Spanish. Oh, you have to go to the Spanish Emergent School. You have to do this. You know, why are you experimenting with your kids, you know, people tell me. But I don't feel like I'm experimenting with my kids. I feel like, I feel as though Grand Rapids is an excellent school system, and I feel as though I am going to navigate, navigate a path through that system for my kids and along the way, take as many kids as I can with me. Because it's not just about my kids. I don't want to just take them and run. So I think I bring that commitment. I think I, my commitment has been demonstrated by the myriad things that I've done and continue to do in the community. And like I said, I won't belabor that now because I'll talk about it in answer to one of the other questions. And, you know, I think that I'll bring a perspective to the board that hopefully will be helpful. I don't have much of a background in elementary and secondary education except my current anecdotal experience with my seven-year-old and four-year-old. But I am in higher education and have been for the last eight years. And much of my community involvement surrounds education, particularly at the elementary and secondary school level. So I think that I'll, that I'll bring a perspective as a very engaged parent. But like I said, more than that, I'll bring a perspective from a higher education perspective. And I know that one of the things mentioned in the Transformation Plan was, I know there'll be a question about charter schools, but about the idea of the Grand Rapids Public Schools being involved in that process and possibly chartering schools or getting involved in that kind of innovation. I'm currently the president of the board at Child Discovery Center, which is a Grand Rapids Public Schools chartered school where my kids go. So I bring that experience. It's only been a year, but I bring that experience of having worked... So I bring that experience, it's only been a year, but I bring, um, that experience of having worked, uh, with that school board and, and been involved in that process. So I, I think that I have something to add.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Provide examples of how you've worked with the community and/or the schools and the results of that work.
Um, well, like I said, and I had to, I'm going to try to truncate my answers a little bit because, um, you know, community service in, in general is kind of just part and parcel of, of kind of who I am and, and what I do. Um, and so I, I'm assistant dean at Cooley Law School, so I'll start there. I'll start with work-related service and go from there. Um, my job at Cooley is assistant dean, but I'm also a clinical professor there. And so many of the things that I've done at Cooley have involved collaborative partnerships with community agencies to bring services to the community. So I was hired at Cooley in two thousand and six to start the Access to Justice Clinic. Um, and that clinic serves underrepresented folks in the community, particularly in the area of family law and, and other civil-related matters. Um, and so it helps the, the community, it helps the students. Our Cooley students actually do the representation and I was the supervising attorney, um, for, for that project. I, I did that for a couple of years before I was invited, uh, to, to the assistant dean position. Um, I then started the Kent County Public Defender Clinic. And so now I now supervise students who are working at the Kent County Public Defender Clinic, which represents indigent defendants in criminal cases. My background is public defender. Um, I graduated from law school in the mid-nineties and I spent several years representing poor people in criminal court, mostly at the appellate level, uh, you know, still some of the greatest work I ever did. My, my husband often teased me because I had this degree and, you know, I could be doing anything and why wasn't I at a big-time firm? Um, but I believe that I still believe that that was my calling, not to be, and I don't use that in a trite way, but that, 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 that I was called to service and, and I believe that. Um, also at Cooley, I, I've, um, worked to start a teen court program, um, to, to start a diversion program for young people. Um, as you all know, uh, you know, discipline in our schools, discipline in our communities, uh, in, in general is an issue. And, and we often, um, all too often lose kids in our, in our system because they have, because they're distracted, either because they are, uh, they have a discipline problem or they're in class with folks with discipline problems. So at Cooley, in collaboration with, with, uh, a few community partners and some of the public schools, actually, we had, um, some Ottawa Hill students come in and be jurors. We started a teen court program where instead of going through the criminal justice system, students would go through this diversion program where they would admit responsibility for whatever the offense was, be it retail fraud or, you know, altercation at school. And a jury of their peers, high school students from across the region, from Grand Rapids and from, um, out, uh, in suburban schools as well, would come together and decide on a disposition for that student. And the disposition would include, of course, ad, admission of responsibility, but also some kind of recompense to the victim of the crime, uh, as well as some monitoring of schoolwork and making sure that they were in school, et cetera. Um, and that's something else that I, that I've, that I've done at Cooley. Um, I, I, you know, I'm, I'm very proud of that work. I'm very blessed to have a job, uh, for which I kind of get paid to, to figure out and, to go out to the community and find cool things to do, uh, to help people. My private life, um, same thing. You know, I, 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 um, as I said, stated, my kids go to the Child Discovery Center and my, my son is a second grader there. So when he started in kindergarten, I joined the PTA, their family team, their version of PTA. A year later, somehow I was on the school board and a couple of months later, somehow I was president of the school board. Um, can't, you know, can't seem to, to, um, to, to stay out of things if, even if I want to. Um, so I've certainly done that. My husband Kenyatta and I have, have started an initiative called the Tipping Point Initiative and it's a very nascent nonprofit, but the idea is, um, to research, assess and address barriers to education. Uh, and, and again, it was born out of our discussions about Jeffrey Canada and going big and, and we often talk about poverty as a catch-all barrier to education, where the kids are poor. And so, you know, they have a hard time and, and I often, you know, push my husband mostly in the middle of the night when he's trying to sleep. What does that mean? What does that mean? My grandparents were poor, you know, my, my, you know, and they still, you know, my parents were still educated. I was still educated. What does that mean that they're poor and they, you know, they can't educate them? And so we talk a lot about, you know, what are the specific barriers, uh, facing young people? You know, is it, is it discipline? Is it transportation? Is it the, you know, um, education of their parents? Is it, you know, what are those things? And so we've started this initiative, um, to both, like I said, research and assess those things, but also programmatically try to address them. So one of our first, uh, initiatives was to start a Cub Scout troop in the city. And again, you know, it was one of those things where my son said, I want, I mean, my husband said, I want our son to be a Cub Scout. And I said, okay, well, you got to start a troop because we're not going to the suburbs to be a Cub Scout. And I don't see any Cub Scouts here. So he said, okay, and, and he, he rose to that challenge and of course, he gave me the Cubs and he took the older boys. And so, um, I have my little twelve-six-year-olds. Um, and, and again, it's about not only bringing my son along, not taking him to an out-county troop or out-city troop and, and, um, giving him the benefits of scouting, but about bringing as many boys as I can with me. And, and I think that the community appreciates that, their parents, the kids appreciate that. It took the kids several months to realize that, that I was, that my son was my son because I truly treat, that they're all my boys, I treat them all the same. So I like to pride myself on, um, certainly having a history of doing, you know, uh, despite how it appears now, I've never been much of a meeting or a talker. Um, but I, I, I consider myself to have much, a history of doing and, and have recently become interested in, and like I said, going a little bigger, going a little higher and, and, and looking at things systematically as well as programmatically. Um, so those are some of the community things. I, I, I was a trustee for the Grand Rapids Bar Association and doing that, you know, we go into the schools every Constitution Day, Kenyatta and I go talk to kids about the Constitution and, you know, how to become a lawyer, what the Constitution means. Um, you know, Law Day, I go and speak to students at Ottawa Hills about, uh, how to become a lawyer. My husband and I give presentations on emotional intelligence. I mean, you know, I, I don't want to, um, uh, that, that's, yeah, what I can think of now.
Tell us what, what you know about the Transformation Plan, your opinion and, um, you know, what, what your role as a board member, um, how you would see it be successful?
Right, so, um, I've heard Superintendent Neal speak about the plan, uh, a couple of times now and, and I've read through it myself. And I'll tell you what I like about it. Like, so I haven't been here long enough to have kind of the emotional reaction like, oh my God, you know, you're closing this school, you're closing, um, that school, though, though I absolutely understand it. And I know it's always a really, um, tough thing to look at hard realities and make tough choices. So for that reason alone, I appreciate Superintendent Neal and I, and I appreciate the, the thoroughness with which she and her staff and the board, you know, everybody actually reviewed these things and came to, um, uh, really tough decisions. And I particularly appreciated some of the language in her introduction that talked about big change and then stability, right? And predictability. Um, so, so to go in and, and make the big changes that are necessary and then to work toward predictability and stability. Um, I like, as Mr. Schroll talked about, I, I liked the, the focus, um, of the plan of what was going well or what is going well in the district. Um, and I like the, you know, I also like the kind of ad, admission or, or the facing of the realities of the things that we need to work on. Um, you know, I have somewhat of a steep learning curve, again, with respect to, to, to how the Grand Rapids Public Schools have, have worked in the past and, and where we're going from here. But, um, but again, I, you know, I, I have an intense interest in it and, you know, I, 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 I don't know how educated an opinion I have, you know, uh, about it. Except to say, I, I think that the board's role really, and I learned a lot about this, uh, at the Discovery Center. I think the board, board's role generally, in any instance, is to support to the extent possible superintendent's, um, excuse me, the superintendent's role or what the superintendent is trying to do to try to hold her up and have her back and, you know, as she tries to make these difficult changes, while also, while also honestly reflecting and assessing, you know, her performance, how the plan is working, et cetera, et cetera, being able to, to, to ask those, um, uh, difficult questions and to, to her, her, hold her accountable, hold staff accountable, teachers, and to hold ourselves accountable for, for how it's going. And so, um, I, you know, I, I found that in, on the board, that, that role, kind of shifting, finding that right balance of not being a micromanager, um, second-guessing every little decision, you know, or implementation, uh, plan that was made, but having the chops to step in when necessary and, and having the discernment to kind of know when that's necessary. So, you know, generally, it appears to me from the plan that there's a long road ahead and, and that, and that there's somewhat of a wait-and-see, you know, how this goes and, and, and what's going to happen. Um, and, and I think that, you know, the, the board will serve the, the Ms. Neal and the, the community well, like I said, by, by getting behind her and, and doing whatever we can to, to support the implementation.
My turn. Discuss your thoughts on issues of charter schools and public education.
All right, so, um, generally, generally, and you, this may have been foreshadowed by my, my prior remarks. Excuse me, I, I, I am a big believer in public education. I was raised in Detroit Public Schools in the nineteen seventies and eighties, a, a long time ago, um, when a quality public education was, was very possible, regardless of background, regardless of race, regardless of neighborhood, et cetera. They were just really good, diverse schools. Um, I'm a big believer in every child in the district having an equal opportunity, equal access to quality education. To the extent that charter schools deflect from that or take away from that, um, you know, I, I am skeptical of them. I, I haven't seen a lot of hard numbers about the effects of charter schools as far as pulling students away from, from the district and things like that, but I believe in general that we, as the community, we as, you know, this board, our teacher, we have both the primary responsibility and the best perspective to take care of our, our students. And so one of the problems with charters, at least in my view, is depending on who, um, is chartering the school or who runs the school, who owns the school, they may have different priorities or they might have, you know, different things that they're trying to do. And, and I want to believe that, right, folks are benevolent in general and they want to educate kids, but they may also want to make a name for themselves, make money, whatever it might be. I know that the public schools, which are and should be open to everybody, have one, right, top priority, which is educating, um, our, our students. Having said that, you know, again, my, my kids go to a charter school, but they go to a school that's chartered by GRPS and that's very important to me. And again, I don't say that lightly or just to placate. Um, when, when we were going to the school, they go to the school because they went to the early childhood education program. We have a, we have a preschool, um, called the Grand Rapids Early Development Center. And my kids went there and I was very impressed with the Reggio Emilia approach. And so I said, oh, absolutely, they're going to the public Reggio Emilia school. Not realizing at the time the difference between it being a Grand Rapids Public School and chartered by a Grand. So my husband kept saying, it's a Grand Rapids Public School, right? I said, yes, it is, it's a great, you know, he kept asking me. I, I, you know, and so as I did the research, you know, I, I, I found, of course, and particularly as I got involved in school policy, um, that, you know, i- it is chartered by the district. And, and I like that model because I think it, it allows the district to give parents other choices and be involved in, in innovation, you know, in expansion of different models of education, different types of curriculum, you know, and, and it gives, um, the district a way to, to let that happen, to have this little laboratory, because we really are kind of a lab school, right, to have that laboratory, but have some ownership of it. And again, to make sure that it's open. So our school, for example, you wouldn't know the difference between it, you know, in any other school and district. We have this wonderful, wonderful, um, little microcosm of the community. We have, you know, upper-middle-class folks who like Reggio Emilia. We have, you know, neighborhood folks who may have lived in a hotel last month. We have, you know, several different languages spoken. We ha, I mean, it is just this beautiful, um, school and I'm, and I'm very proud, you know, that, that, that the Grand Rapids Public School had the faith in the model, uh, to support it. And, and, you know, we're doing really well and so I'd like to see that, that continue, so.
Okay, I want to, um, let you know that we're about twenty minutes into a thirty-minute interview and we've got quite a few more questions.
So, yeah, right, let's, if we can speed it up.
Okay.
Go ahead, but, and, and some other people in here, this is a singular. So pick one issue that you think is the most pressing thing facing GRPS and what do you, how do you think the board ought to engage on it?
Okay, um, so I will do this quickly in soundbite fashion. Um, so again, not to be, to be redundant, I think, um, taking a look at what are specific barriers to education. I think that, um, GRPS is doing a wonderful job with curriculum. I think we have some fantastic teachers. I think we have a forward-thinking, forward-looking transformation plan. Um, but I, I also think that, that the teachers, um, have this issue when they have, you know, kids who are a step behind, you know, when they come into the classroom, into these beautiful new classrooms with wonderfully trained teachers. And so I think that taking a look at, and seeing what role, if any, the board can play in addressing some of those barriers, right? I think parental participation is a huge, um, part of education and, and, uh, and it should be fostered. So to the extent that the board, you know, can, can talk about policies that encourage that, you know, to, to talk about policies regarding, for example, uh, people with criminal records and, and, and volunteering in the schools or, you know, talk about policies that encourage participation at, at, um, parent-teacher conferences, you know, what can we do? You know, what can we do about, um, addressing out-of-school suspensions that, you know, tend to put kids behind and take them out of school, et cetera? What can we do to look at not just this catch-all poverty, right, and spruce up the schools, but what can we do to address kind of those, those more nuanced barriers to education?
Can you provide an example of a time when you had to collaborate with others on a project or a task? Uh, and can you talk about your role and how you approached working with that task as a team?
So, uh, very briefly, I, I mentioned the teen court that, that I started at Cooley and that's probably one of the more collaborative, um, projects that I've worked on. I, I worked on that project with two other people. We, we really created the program out of whole cloth that was modeled on a, on a diversion program, um, out of Lansing. I worked with a fellow attorney who was an adjunct professor at Cooley at the time, he's now full-time. Um, and then I worked with this recent grad who literally volunteered for this project for two years and ran it wonderfully. Um, and again, it, it, it involves, um, quite a bit of collaboration, certainly amongst the three of us, but also with community organizations, finding schools, um, with whom to partner, finding teachers to pull on board, um, getting the judges in the Kent County Circuit Court on board, getting probation department on board and, and nurturing those relationships. How I approached it, um, is, is how I've learned to approach things in, in my middle age is to, is to, um, uh, take a look at the strengths and weaknesses of the team that we have, um, to play my strengths, to, to be honest with myself and others about, you know, about weaknesses or times. So for example, because I'm assistant dean on the campus, you know, I had limitations on the roles that I could play, right? So I could certainly, you know, be visionary and, and, and talk about what it would look like, but I had limitations with respect to, you know, could I meet with the kids every week or could I, right? And so I had to be honest with, uh, or about the fact that I had other roles on campus. So what can I do? What is Anna going to do? What is Mike going to do? Um, and, and, and so we worked really well together in that respect, kind of staying in our lanes, but, um, but stepping up and into other lanes only when invited and, and only as necessary. Um, and then finally, it, you know, and this kind of just goes with my service attitude in general, I just showed up and just showed up enthusiastically and that's what I tend to bring, again, probably not surprisingly, um, to most collaborations is, is, is an enthusiasm and a let's do this and a let's, you know. And so when it, when things look like they may not happen or, or something is difficult, I'll say, you know what? We'll figure, we'll figure it out. We'll figure it out, it's going to happen. And so I, you know, have this tendency to roll my sleeves up. Our principal at Discovery Center threatened to, like, put me on payroll last year because I, when I say I'm at school all the time, I'm at school all the time because I, you know, I'm very heavily invested in the things that I commit to.
Okay, as you have, uh, learned in your time here in, uh, Grand Rapids, it's a very diverse city and, uh, and a diverse school district. What have you done to promote diversity and inclusion here?
Okay, so, uh, again, um, my role at Cooley involves a lot of that, that kind of work. Um, I'm on diversity committees at Cooley. I'm very much a resource for all students, but particularly students of color. And, and sometimes I say, and again, I don't say this lightly or, or try to be trite, um, part of, part of what I bring or what I've done to enhance diversity is to, is to seek out and to put myself, um, or try to put myself in roles where I could be an example and a mentor to other people. And, and again, not just people of color, certainly not just black women or black men, but, but to the entire community. So I certainly played that role at Cooley. Um, you know, students seek me out. I always love to see, um, African-American students' faces when they realize the assistant dean is black. They're like, oh, wow, yeah, because they feel like, for better or for worse, okay, here's somebody who, there's a better chance that she might understand where I'm coming from, right? Maybe I do, maybe I don't, but, you know, there's this affinity for whatever it's worth, this comfort level. Um, you know, the same thing at the, at the school, um, you know, and, and in the Cub Scout troop. One of the reasons why I wanted to, to start an intercity Cub Scout troop is because I wanted to, again, roll my sleeves up and show the parents of these kids, right? Who, it, it's one thing for people to tell them, you need to be doing this, you need to be participating, you need to have your kid in Cub Scouts, but it's another thing for me to stand alongside them, coming from where they come from, coming from similar, um, neighborhoods and say, I'm going to do this with you. So thirty-second Anadu, I had a, um, Cub Scout parent whose son is in my class, my son's class. And, and when she dropped her son off at the first Cub Scout meeting, I said, well, you can, you know, you can drop him off. I'll bring him home if you want, or you could stay, right? Why don't you stay? And she said, oh, I don't do participation, right? That's, you know, I'll drop him off and you don't mind bringing him home, that's fine. And, and, you know, she was very honest about that. So I said, okay. I certainly didn't want, you know, her son not to be able to participate because of that. But since then, not only has she started participating, she's become the snack mom. She's actually going to camp, like, sleeping in a tent. Like, I didn't even want to do that. I'm going to do it, but, right? So she, but she, but she stepped up to do that in part because I didn't just say, you know, shame on you, right? You know, so, so I was somebody that she could, um, you know, look to, to do that. And then, you know, community things, again, anything I get my hands on, I've, I've been through Institute for Healing Racism. I'm, you know, been working with the Diversity Committee of the Grand Rapids Bar Association. You know, I go into the schools, um, to talk to the kids, you know, again, to show them an example of somebody who comes from where they come from and to show other students of an example. You know, I, I've had students at Cooley, um, Caucasian students tell me that their only experience with African-Americans is what they saw on TV until they got to law school. And so even for them to have a professor, you know, or to have somebody who, to retalk to them in that way. And I tend to do so, or I try to do so, um, in a, in a very kind of welcoming and collaborative way as opposed to a, you know, kind of judgmental, um, us-versus-them way and tend to do that, so.
All right, um, well, as you know, academic achievement is a core mission of the school district. What are some conditions that you think contribute to learning and some barriers?
So I talked about some of the conditions that I, you know, feel contribute to learning. You know, some of the, the obvious ones, like a, a safe school environment with committed and, and reliable teachers. But also some of the things that I think we don't talk about every day, for example, high expectations for the kids, giving the kids a sense that we believe in them and that we believe that they can excel. I read a study not too long ago that talked about teachers' expectations of the kids and how those expectations affect kids' learning, right? So if you have a teacher, if the teacher doesn't think Johnny can learn, and the teacher asks Johnny a question, and Johnny hesitates, she's going to say, okay, well, Suzie, you answer. But if she, if she has a different opinion of Suzie, and Suzie hesitates, she might say, take your time, baby, you know, good, good thinking, good analytical thinking. And so, even the way that we approach students, so making sure that we maintain high expectations, making sure that we give parents avenues to participate, again, without, you know, being critical and judgmental about some of the barriers that they might have to that, like work schedules, transportation, you know, lack of experience with that, right, with participating at school, things like that. So I think that, that, that those could contribute to, to education. And so, and, and I've talked about the barriers, you know, obviously, you know, I, I, I know my time is short, so I don't want to be too redundant.
Could you provide an example when you had a significant conflict and what actions you did to take to resolve the issues?
Well, again, one of my roles as assistant dean is basically conflict manager. I'm like the vice principal of campus, and when students, excuse me, when students are accused of some kind of wrongdoing, cheating, or conflict with other students, they have to come and see me. And my role is, is not just to prosecute and convict, but it's to, to hopefully work with the student on professionalism and, and hopefully salvage, you know, the student, the, the, you know, in a professional way. And so, in many ways, part and parcel of my job is, is handling conflicts. I, I could think of one particular case where I had a, a, a hard job because I had a student who had this really strange thing happen that made it look like she had cheated. Like, it was just a freakish thing, too long of a story to get into it. And so I had colleagues who were convinced that she had done this, after talking to her extensively and, you know, looking at everything. And, and I think, you know, one of the, the blessings of, of legal education, I think, is this ability to kind of step outside and try to at least at all times, see both sides of things. And so, I, essentially, I believed the student, right, after talking to her. The, the thing that happened was so outlandish that had she done it, it, it just could not have been done on purpose. But my colleagues didn't necessarily agree with me. And so, I had to handle colleagues, some of whom were my supervisors, you know, telling me that, implying that I was crazy for believing her. I had to handle understandably irate student whose education was on the line because she was being accused of cheating. And I mean, she was really upset. And, and so I had to, to, to balance those two, and I had to, to, you know, then deal with my own conflicted feelings and, and wanting to do the right thing, and wanted to, you know, feel like I was playing the role of, of judge and, and really wanted to make a, a good determination. We resolved that issue, she, she was absolved of, of, of wrongdoing. I, and, and one of the ways that I handled it, and what I, the way I tend to handle conflict is, is directly. So I went to the colleague who was my supervisor, who, who seemed not to believe me, and I said, you know what? You know, you may or may not believe me, but this is why I think what I think, you know? And, and so, instead of running from, instead of, I, I said to the student, you know, you may be upset, but this is why they think you did this, you know, et cetera, et cetera. And, and really trying to resolve that. I, again, you know, the student's education was salvaged, she's since graduated. I, I ended up having a very close relationship with her, you know, she participated in my clinic, and, and my colleague respected the fact that I, you know, stuck to my guns, even in the, even though I still think that there are people who, who are skeptical of her story, so. And that, that was also part of my role when I came to the Discovery Center, Center Board, was to kind of manage some relationships, you know, among staff and administration and things like that. I, I, I have a, a tendency to play a role of consensus builder or mediator, or, you know, again, enthusiast cheerleader, whatever you want to call it.
Thank you.
Two more questions?
Okay, all right. Excuse me about the talking fast, I'm just trying to get through them.
Teacher effectiveness is the most significant factor in student achievement. What do you see as contributing to this, and what do you see as the barriers?
Okay. So I've gotten to know the, the, the teachers at our school pretty well, certainly my son's teachers, but also the, the teachers in general. And I, and I could talk a little bit about what they tell me. I think that some of the factors that contribute to teacher effectiveness certainly is the feeling of being supported. So one of the issues I had to deal with when I got there was to the extent that teachers didn't feel like they were supported. They felt like they were walking on eggshells, or that, you know, their very existence was tied to, you know, some esoteric assessments, et cetera. So, one of the first things I did when I joined the board is I, I, you know, I literally sat down and talked to whatever teacher wanted to, to talk to me. Yeah, I may not have had a solution for him or her, I, I may have had to go and even research what, you know, I mean, what we were talking about, but just that, like, just the fact that I, you know, it kind of came in and said, well, well, tell me what your issues are and, and how I can help, went a long way. So feeling supported, feeling like they have adequate resources to do the job that, that they need to do, feeling like they have support as far as creating a safe environment for students. You know, you know, strong uni- strong unions, I think, have always been, I, I found that to be the case, that the, that the teachers are comforted by knowing that they always have somebody in their corner. So that even if I can't do anything, that, you know, that they have some recourse, they have a, they have an organization, they have a steward, they have a person that, you know, that, that, that they can go to. You know, some of, I guess, some of, some of the barriers to teacher effectiveness, just from my experience, has been trying to manage the classroom sometimes when, when there are behavior issues or discipline issues, or trying to make sure that there are the services available for special education students, for example, that they have the tools that they need to address the individual needs of, of, of each of the students. And, you know, and, and things like that, but.
Last one, anything else you'd like to tell us?
Okay, good. I don't think there's anything else to say. No, again, I just want to thank you again for your consideration, I, I really do. Like I said, I, I, I want you to know that, that I don't take it lightly, and that I, you know, if, if you believe that I can make a contribution, I promise you that I will as hard as I can, to affect change.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Well. Just for those candidates remaining, I, I just want to express again my gratitude for our, as a board, for coming forward with your candidacy. This has been a very impressive evening of abilities and perspectives and experience that have been brought to the table as possibilities at this table. I'm thinking about stepping down, because it's been, it's been fantastic. So, I would like us, since it's been quite a while since we had our first candidate, to just spend a little bit of time going over our notes and the candidates before we begin discussion. And anyone's got to take a break before, so, just five minutes? Happy for us. Challenging task to pick amongst these outstanding candidates. I trust you all were looking very carefully at our agreed-upon criteria and how these candidates supported them. So, I guess I would like to open discussion about that, if we could begin to discuss what we experienced in the interview and how the candidates demonstrated our established criteria. Yeah, David, or Mr. LeGrand?
I do just want to frame this by echoing your comments again. First of all, I think interviews are, as we probably, a lot of us know, imperfect, right?
Okay, talk to us now.
All right, we've got a twenty-minute snapshot of people, or maybe a thirty-minute snapshot. I sort of feel like I just went through a retreat. I mean, this was an amazing group, and they fought really hard and intelligently about this stuff. And we've had some really high-level discussion and a, a lot of amazing input. And I guess one of the, the first thing I want to say, and I'm sorry it's, it's a little bit of a sidetrack, and I know it's late, but, a lot of, it's, it's amazing to me how many people were interested in engaging with us in this work. And I think as a board, we need to, we need to really seriously think about how we can capture the talent that doesn't wind up sitting up here. And I think that when I was on city commission, we had a, an environmental group that was not just city commissioners and not just the mayor, but other people in the community. And I can think of about six different areas that we can have productive subcommittees that a lot of these people have serious strengths in. So, for example, if we had a marketing and a community engagement subcommittee, some of these people are going to be brilliant on that. If we had a sustainability group, which we do, some of these people are going to be brilliant on that. Actually, people who are willing to engage with our, with our, in some of our work on finance would be wonderful. People willing to engage in curriculum would be wonderful. People who are actually willing to work with us on the community partnership question, you know, actually connecting us with Network 180, for example, on better mental health services for, for our kids, that'd be a huge win for us. And I personally think we've got a huge issue with discipline and with keeping all of our kids in our schools. And a lot of the people who have, who have been in front of us here have really, I think, got some real stuff to offer there in terms of transforming discipline in our, in our, away from our current model and towards a, a keeping our kids in school model and not an expelling model. So, I'd just like to, I, I mean, I know I'm supposed to talk to you, Wendy.
No, not just me, the board, not just Wendy, the board, the whole board, just not to them, it's to us.
Well, I know, but I, but I hope, what I hope is that, that they will be willing to walk with us on this in a meaningful way, that this board can think of ways to structure capturing some of that expertise, because the dilemma we've got is we only get to choose one person to be up front. Unless some of us want to draw straws and, you know, vote ourselves off the island, because it was an incredibly talented group. So, that's, that's just the first thing I wanted to say, wherever else we go.
I don't know, I guess I'd be the first one to break the ice. I was thinking, as brief soliloquy, I was going to end with some, uh, moving, um, I'm just messing with you, but anyway, I guess, um, and I, I took some notes here, and, you know, I, I think we're all probably honestly mildly apprehensive to start moving forward considering the excellent, you know, folks that were before us. It's almost like you're making indictment of others if you point out strengths of one, but nonetheless, it is what it is. So, I'm just going to go down, sort of the, just to get the conversation going, the seven criteria that, that we had. I'm simply going to sort of list, in my own process, sort of those that I think did the most effective job in their responses of meeting those criteria, and then we can take it from there. So, so for me, though, number one, policy ana- analysis and critical thinking. I had a couple of names next to this, Dr. Krishnas and Ms. Brain for demonstrating and embracing diversity. The name I had next to that was Ms. Scripps, bringing a new perspective. And we have, in parentheses, underrepresented. I had Mr., and I apologize, Mr. Matthias, Matthias, excuse me, and Mr. Sro. Connection familiar with GRPS, the Board of Ed. I had actually three, Ms. Scripps, Matthias, and Ms. Brain. Team player leadership collaboration. I had Mr. Sro, Ms. Scripps, and Ms. Brain. Community involvement, educational advocacy. I had Ms. Scripps, Ms. Brain, and Mr. Matthias. And I apologize, I guess I butchered that again, probably. Understanding the factors related to academic achievement, I had Ms. Brain. So, so I guess if we just tallied that up in that regard, I don't know if I'd be comfortable saying I'm recommending one over the other, but I guess I obviously do have some names written more than others, so that at least gets the conversation going.
I want to say that the, there was some real demonstration of in-depth community engagement we saw. Ms. Brain, it was tremendously impressive with the short time that she's been here, how deeply she's been involved in leadership. And Mr. Ipple's career has been also very impressive in terms of what he would bring to the table. I felt that the, I felt like the depth of values and understanding that came with analysis from some of our candidates was extremely impressive. Ms., Dr. Krishnas was tremendously impressive of his depth of analysis as he went through things and his depth of understanding about education, as was Mr. Matthias. I felt there was a richness in reflection throughout Mr. Matthias's interview. In his very first question, I ticked off number two, number three, number four, and number seven, and number five in our established criteria. And I felt with his interview, I was ticking off more of those throughout, and I don't think it was intentional on his part. It was just in his reflection about what was going on in education. So I started feeling I keep was matching up to our criteria most closely, but it was difficult. It was very difficult because, I don't know, I don't know. I saw strength of analysis, I guess I'm making a bit of an argument for Mr. Matthias. I saw strength of analysis, almost quietly, when he would talk about issues. He rattled off very quickly, very specific issues, but then centered on crucial issues. So I felt like he had a depth of understanding regarding the Grand Rapids Public Schools. I don't know, I could advocate for some of the other candidates as well, but I was tremendously impressed with Mr. Matthias as far as how he matched up to our criteria.
As I went through also, I think, and I looked at an embrace of diversity, a new perspective, oh, I'm sorry, a new perspective, community involvement, and really understanding the factors related to academic achievement, not just in teaching, but in all the other areas that significantly impact kids, not, not just the teacher standing there, although that's critically important. I too thought John Matthias really represented that from his knowledge and his current work and his past work in dealing with diversity issues, with his own background, and his work at Burton and with KSSN. So I, I, I really, I really saw that, you know, team player leadership, you know, we see that, I think, in all of them. It's going to be hard to separate anyone. Certainly, community involvement, educational advocacy, I saw Ms. Brain. Certainly, so much work in that, as well, again, as John Matthias. That, that whole work in that community, the effort that's gone into it with them has just been, was, I was impressed.
Pastor Rudy?
I think one of the most important things that I want to say is that all of the candidates that came all gave a very good description of community involvement and dealing with conflict as well. But I think one of the most important things that I keyed on is that relationship that those individuals had within the community and how they related to the schools. I heard very little, with the exception of two individuals, and that is Matthias and Brain, in reference to their involvement along with Ms. Scrip with the school and with teachers, and working with them side by side to deal with issues, and to deal with the educational growth within a student. For me, it's important that an individual that's going to be on this board has a good understanding of the community in which it is, in which they are going to be involved in, in terms of how the Grand Rapids Public School system is set up and its culture. I felt that those three candidates, for me, struck me in terms of working with students and working with teachers and working in the community was important. So, all of the candidates were great, all the applicants that, from what we've saw in the past to this very point were good. It's a very difficult choice for any of us to make, but we want to make a choice that has to be the fit for this board.
Dr. Baker?
Yeah, absolutely, this is, was incredible evening. And, you know, might, might be polite to say this, but it's also accurate to say this, that, that any and all of the candidates tonight can and perhaps should be on the board. I think that, and I think that there's, you know, getting on the board usually involves elections, and I think that, you know, one of the things that's, that is important is our sense that persons will want to be on the board, not just the next year and a half, but that would be the experience working over the next year and a half in that. And so I think that elections are daunting, and I, I think that you should, any one that, the ones that do not get chosen tonight should, should talk to the members of this board, for the most part, everybody here. Um, for the most part, everybody here, um, with the exception of one, became an elected official by, you know, running for this board without probably much knowledge of how elections work. And so it's, um, so I would definitely encourage people to participate 'cause I think any, any and all of you could win an election to be on this board. I think that what I look for, a- and I think I'm speaking of myself as a board member, um, who is, you know, who cares, that when I wanna figure out what is going on, who on the board can help me understand what's going on in the schools? And so I know that I got every, everybody on the board, I have a sense of who I can go to to get a sense. Or I can expect persons to bring up perspectives. And so, um, what's most important to me, um, is the perspective, is what is it that we're getting that's new? Uh, uh, an insight that isn't already up here. Um, and so I think that each of us probably know the insights that each of us offer. Um, and so I'm looking for an insight that isn't sitting here. Um, and so that's what I think is most important to myself. Um, and to not appear to be ranking, I'm only gonna talk about the person who I, I think demonstrated that, that issue, um, most closely, and that would be, um, John Matthias. Um, I think that what's important when I look through this, so the perspective is important, but I think that his perspective is the one that is, he talked about his, his deep relationships with parents, with, um, students, with teachers, with administrators, with the community, um, and that, uh, and that specifically with communities that matter and to some extent with, uh, and communities that were not necessarily all that connected to ourselves. Um, and I think that that's, uh, one that I think is most, most important. And I would say, um, you know, the analysis and the, uh, the perspectives that come that's reflected in these other criteria also just comes from kind of thoughtful reflection, um, from his experiences working with the various groups here in GRPS at Burton, but also in communities he participated in at Calvin, Texas, and Chicago. So, um, I think that those are the things that we're gonna gain a lot, um, that we don't already have, um, um, to this board. And so that's why I would support, um, at this time. At the same time, you know, I'm very, um, I think that, you know, very thrilled with others, but at this time, I think that Mr. Matthias is the closest to offering, um, the breadth of experiences that we'd like to have for this board.
Dr. Randalls?
I, I have to reiterate that all six candidates really could do a, a fantastic job. A level of enthusiasm and caring is, is really apparent. And, um, I think Reynard's ranking, um, was, uh, informative and helpful in, in focusing on the criteria that we, uh, came up with and decided that this was an important tool to use. Um, I think that, um, Dr. Krishnas and Ms. Brain and Mr. Matthias, um, really, um, just brought a little bit of, uh, higher edge in terms of analysis and, and strengths. Um, that being said, in, in my mind, um, it, it, Ms. Brain seemed to eke out a little bit more in terms of, uh, her deep connectedness with, um, community, really diving in, having a big, um, analysis and understanding, um, in, in my mind. But I think, um, the top three would be, and the top six would be, uh, fantastic, but those are sort of my.
Feelings? Mr. O'Connor?
Uh, this is, uh, feels like we've made a lot of weighty decisions on this board over the last several years. And, uh, this, this one feels almost more difficult than a lot of things we've had to do. Um, you know, and, and it's, you look at all six people who have applied here at this point, um, or, or who we've interviewed, and, you know, I think to myself, I want somebody on the board that, that will push me as a board member to make me be a better board member, um, to, to make me think differently than maybe I, I do now or will bring a different perspective that I necessarily might not have, uh, the most intimate knowledge of. And I can see how each, each of these candidates has, you know, could bring something to the table that would, uh, would challenge me in some direction. Um, but I too think, uh, that Mr. Matthias has, has risen to the top for me. Um, just bringing his perspective, um, being in the schools on a daily basis. And we, and we talk about, you know, const- constantly, you know, we as a board talk about parental involvement and, you know, just different things that are outside of just education as a whole, um, are outside of the actual educational experience in the classroom that, that are needed to support education. And, um, you know, I just, he had a couple of answers that really just, just struck me, um, just talking about the, the things he sees on a daily basis and how those can be addressed in a, in a more efficient and possibly better manner to, to help our staff do what they do best, and that's teach. And, um, just, I guess it's just, it's a very, very, I, I, I could go on and on about probably each and every one of these people on here, but I'd just like to keep it to one, I think, at this point.
Yeah, I mean, maybe this isn't all that useful comment, but, but to get back to, you know, when I look at the first criteria, policy analysis and critical thinking, it sort of strikes me as absurd to even rank these folks on that. Um, they're all such high-level, smart analytical thinkers that, uh, you know, I almost have to just wash that criteria off because it'd be silly to say that I'm s- I mean, they're just all brilliant people. Um, everybody we heard from tonight, I think, frankly. Um, you know, demonstrates and embrace, and embrace of diversity? I don't think I heard a single bad answer on that tonight. Uh, so again, uh, who am I to, who, I, I just don't feel like I'm, like I'd be confident to differentiate on that, on that score. Um, you know, and then I guess that does lead me back to, uh, Tony and John's comments and, and Pastor Moody's comments, which are, you know, there are a couple of things. One is rootedness in that daily classroom experience and, and the experience of the school and, and understanding what's going on at the ground level and, and empathy, um, on that level. And I think that, um, I think it's true that, um, that's, that's something that, that really could be brought to the, that, that we can't get enough of. And, and, uh, you know, if we're not looking to be a lockstep board, and I don't think that group think is, serves the public best, right? I think that, um, getting different perspectives is gonna shake us all and make us all better as a board. Um, I think for me, that, that puts, um, Reverend Matthias slightly at the top of the list.
I would make a motion to, uh, appoint Mr. Matthias as the next member of the Board of Education.
Support. Are there discussion? There being none? Secretary?
Who's second in that motion?
I did.
All right, uh, Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Randalls? Dr. Randalls, excuse me.
Yep, yep.
Doctor, Mrs. Randalls. Uh, Ms. Ross? Yes, uh, Ms. Slate?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. LeGrand Esquire?
Yes.
Pastor Moody?
Yes.
President of all?
Yes.
Pointing John Matthias passes eight zero. Welcome aboard, sir.
Yeah. Congratulations, Mr. Matthias.
I didn't know what you're getting into.
Thank you again to the other candidates.
Dave?
Thank you all.
Excellent, thank you so much.
Are you, are you teaching them the secret handshake, or who does that?